Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 7th, 2017. We did meet early in a special meeting to interview for openings on our Yountville Arts Commission and our Yountville Parks and Recreation Commission openings, which we'll be addressing later in our regular meeting agenda. So I'll go ahead and call this regular meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Dorman.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up is adoption of our agenda, and I believe we are going to change the sequence of a couple items based on our audience in attendance this evening. The recommendation from Councilmember Dorman is to move item 10A, the conversation about the municipal code amendment, to after 11B administrative item. So that allows everyone in the audience that is here to be a part of a conversation about the RH items 10B and 11A to, I mean, you're obviously welcome to stay the entire night, but if you are here for those two items. And also understand that we will be addressing those items opening the public hearing, but there has been a request by the applicant to continue that item. We, as a council, will be taking that into consideration when we get to that item. Steve, is there anything else you wanted to say about that at this point?
No, just that the RH has requested a continuance of both items. The public hearing has been duly noticed, and therefore it will be open, and those that are interested in providing comment and direction to the council on that project will be able to do so. RH, when they clarify what the continuance is, for those of you that are interested in following that item, that agenda item will be completely re-noticed, reposted, just as it was for this item.
So we'll be opening the public hearing and taking public testimony, but there will be no action taken tonight, assuming that when we get to that point, we agree that we're going to continue that item. So with those changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
It's all moved.
Anyone?
I did.
I think Councilmember Durham, and then seconded by Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
That adoption of the modified agenda passes. Public comment. Now is the time for anyone who wants to speak to the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Now would be the time to come forward, and I know we do have some guests in the audience that are interested in doing so. So now would be the time to come forward. I'm looking. Would you like to speak?
You might have to address it earlier. I'll wait until later.
Okay. Now, there won't be public comment after my address, but okay.
I understand.
All right. Anyone else would like to come forward? Seeing no one, we'll move right ahead then. We have a consent calendar item of minutes for January 17th. Is there action to be had on that? A motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And my abstention is noted since I was absent from that meeting. So we were racing to my state-of-the-town address, which is, I'm sure, why most of you are here. I'm going to pretend that's true. But I would just first like to thank all of you for being here and being engaged in our community, and I think you'll hear a little bit from the remarks that I'm going to be making shortly, that we have achieved a lot this year. We're very proud of what we're able to do as a community, with our staff, with all of our community participation, and with the council that I sit with. So with that, I will take my cleansing sip of water and get to it. This is my state-of-the-town address for February 7th, 2017. I started thinking back in early November about what I wanted to say in my state-of-the-town address this year. It seems so long ago now. I typically highlight some of the goals reached, projects completed, events enjoyed, and share a tone or vision I feel represents where we've been and where we're headed entering the new year. Listing the goals, projects, and events is pretty straightforward. Determining where we are as a community exiting 2016 and where we're headed in 2017 is not so clear, not so typical. In 2016, many challenges and opportunities presented themselves that impacted Yountville. Early in 2016, the sale became official of Vintage Estate, which consists of Velagio, Vintage Inn, and V Marketplace. A significant percentage of our retail businesses, office space, and hotel rooms changed hands. The challenge was not knowing how the transition would impact our small town. Brookfield Hotel Properties took the opportunity to invest significantly in upgrades and to respect the role it assumed, taking over for decades of local family ownership. In local business news, Yountville welcomed Jean-Charles Boisette and his wine and culinary team to town with the JCB Tasting Salon and Atelier. Chef Anita Cartagena opened Protea, fulfilling a dream of owning her own restaurant and serving food inspired by her native Puerto Rico. Stewart Cellars opened a wine tasting room, café, and bookstore, adding another gathering place for locals and visitors in the north part of town. Across the street from Stewart, progress continues to be made on the construction of RH Yountville, which will offer a unique culinary, wine, and lifestyle retail experience. We also said goodbye to Ed and Chris Barker, owners of Yatahe and Artistry &amp; Gold, when they closed the doors to one of the oldest small businesses in Yountville. Mid-year, Whitney Diver McAvoy took over as president and CEO of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce and launched a new effort to support our business community, following the retirement of Cindy Sauserman from that post. A decade-old conversation to beautify the Highway 29 underpass became a reality when the town, its arts commission, and private donors raised funds, and the community helped hire two Sacramento-based artists to paint a mural, "The Memory of a Tree," which is scheduled to be installed this spring. The Yountville community again had to respond to the possibility of our elementary school being closed or consolidated with another campus. Pleas to the School District Board of Trustees resulted in changes to merger plans and a renewed commitment to work with the parents and community members in support of a long-term, viable Yountville Elementary School. Efforts to boost enrollment and maximize the potential of the campus are ongoing and headed in a positive direction. The makeup of the council changed last year, even though our local municipal election was canceled. Incumbents Jeff Durham and Margie Moller were unopposed to retain their seats. Carrie Dorman joined the council to complete the two years left on the term of Vice Mayor Richard Hall, following his resignation due to moving out of town. Feel-good stories from 2016 include continued fiscal health, the meteoric rise in popularity of pickleball, and a rocking second annual residence bash. The town delivered on several notable public works opportunities as well, with major park renovations and infrastructure improvements last year that have continued into 2017, including the successful operation of flood control measures along Hopper Creek that helped control the major storm season we've experienced and continue to experience. Also noteworthy is the water line replacement and street resurfacing of Yountville Crossroad. A highlight will be the soon-to-be-completed renovation of Veterans Memorial Park, adding recognition of the military branches and service of our veterans, new leisure and entertainment spaces, and improved public access to the park. We are emphasizing the strong bond shared between the town of Yountville and the California Veterans Home. I continue to work closely with our State Department of Veterans Affairs leadership, as well as our Yountville Veterans Home Administration, to direct CalVets' plans to update and upgrade veteran services and support. That includes looking at ways to modify and renovate home facilities, to generate workforce housing, and to engage public-private partnerships to better serve our veterans, their families, and those who care for our warriors. Opportunities stem from the visit late last year by U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary Robert McDonald and Governor Jerry Brown's Little Hoover Commission, as they research how to partner with local administrators to improve the quality of life for our veterans. Two statewide initiatives played a significant role in our community last year. Following the election, we became challenged to finding a balance between the use of recreational marijuana and crafting local ordinances that fairly and appropriately control the impacts to our residents. The same is true about the growing existence of short-term rentals and second homeownership. Our challenge is to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods while supporting affordable housing opportunities for all income levels. The town also embarked on Envision Yountville, a general plan update that will involve community member engagement to help the town council and staff map out the future of our town. Here's where my address becomes less typical. This country, our state, and even our community is divided over how we should move forward as a nation. Whether the topic is gun violence, tensions between law enforcement and citizens, immigration, economic policy, or social priorities, we are at a crossroads. At all levels of government, those of us fortunate enough to be trusted to represent our communities must do so with the best interest of the public first and foremost. At the same time, we need to act and make decisions based on our individual core values. It's pretty simple to get behind policies that are meant to generate jobs, protect the citizens of our nation, and generally support the success of our country. The struggle becomes when the means to achieve those goals appear to discriminate against people based on religion, ethnicity, or economic status. In response, people have been inspired to make their feelings known in ways they have not done before. I see that as democracy in action. We can disagree about the best way to create jobs, protect the environment, keep our citizens safe, or provide government services, but we must do so with honesty, integrity, and respect. The vitriol we have witnessed these last many months diminishes us and divides us. We public officials took an oath to serve and protect the people of our community. When we see less than that happening, we need to come together and voice and purpose to ensure elected leaders at all levels live up to that standard. Over the last three months, I have met with our local, state, and federal legislators to evaluate the rapidly changing political landscape and to discuss how best to proceed, preferably with a unified message. That effort is ongoing, with statements and actions expected in the coming weeks. Paraphrasing the Equal Rights Resolution that I authored and the town council adopted in April of 2009, Yountville does not support discrimination of any kind. We support equal rights and protection for all our citizens. We embrace the diversity of our residents, visitors, and local workforce. We recognize the value of cultural and social diversity in our community. We strive to be a safe, vibrant, and tolerant place for all residents and their families, free from hate and other forms of discrimination. I, and I believe all of us, remain committed to that mission. When we see a threat to members of our community who have immigrated from Mexico and other countries, it is our responsibility to support their human rights. Importantly, we can do that while also focusing on our nation's security and economic welfare. These are not mutually exclusive efforts. We should speak out to protect the rights of all men and women, even those who share different religious, social, or economic perspectives. However, we must do so with respect, honesty, and integrity, even when that's difficult. Fundamental to our democracy is the ability to speak out, to disagree, to debate policy, and to elect people we believe will best represent our values and our interests. To achieve and maintain this reality, we must dedicate ourselves to making our community safe, prosperous, healthy, welcoming, and vibrant. We should not wait for others to do it for us. Community service can take many forms, including volunteering, supporting nonprofit organizations, or joining a town board or commission. Speak out or seek out what works for you, but I encourage each and every one of us to participate. The more we are involved, the better we can affect outcomes and to make a positive impact. After all, we face new challenges and new opportunities every day. Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, I will take another cleansing sip of water and move on to our next item, which we have moved to, let's see, we have moved 10A. So we are going to move straight ahead to 10B and open the public hearing and receive maybe a brief staff report at least on this RH Wine Vault item.
Good evening. Since the applicant has requested continuance of this item, I'll keep my staff report to you brief. The project essentially involves, oh, let me quickly switch over to the PowerPoint for this one.
This is always just to add a little dramatic effect for the audience.
Well, it's useful when it comes to design review. And I was mentioning that this project can be broken down into two components. One are the design review aspects, and the other are the requested modifications to the approved use permits. And when it comes to design review, the project is rather minor in scope. When it relates to the RH Galleries project, they are requesting a change in roofline and the elimination of the two gable ends on the building that fronts the street. It's squaring off the entry arch, replacing the approved standing seam metal roof with a glass conservatory roof, and then replacing the approved sconces with a single pendant. I mentioned they're minor in scope and really in keeping with the design and scale of the development as it's currently approved. At Maison Rie, the changes include switching the location of a door and window on the south elevation and reconfiguring the accessories building in the rear by switching the pantry and the restrooms, and adding six steel accessory structures for shade. And the last item, the accessory structures, are the item that deal most closely with the use and may have the greatest impact if outdoor uses are allowed to expand. Also, as part of this proposal is to connect these two separate parcels via a pedestrian connection between the sites, and it's located at a mid-block crossing over the Burgundy Commons driveway. These next two illustrations show the previously approved interiors. And here, the streetscape on the right, you see the design changes. This is a site plan for the two sites, and it relates to the existing uses. The existing uses that are allowed are at the RH Gallery site, it's retail with a limited-service restaurant, and a limited-service restaurant is essentially counter-service. While at Maison Rie, it's approved as a wine tasting room, and it's held to a 25% retail diversity component. The two projects are already subject to conditions of approval that are intended to mitigate impacts, and these include that the outdoor hours of operation at Maison Rie are to end at 8:00 p.m. or dusk, that the indoor operation at Maison Rie is permitted till 10:00 p.m., and it's at 9:00 p.m. at the adjoining RH Gallery site. The project is required to install an eight-foot-tall CMU fence along the property lines that adjoin Burgundy Commons, and so that would be around the RH Gallery parking lot and the Maison Rie garden area. There is also a motion sensor exit gate that is required at the exit of Burgundy Commons to prevent the commercial guest from entering the one-way private driveway in the wrong direction. And lastly, both of the projects are subject to a parking management program that's intended to minimize employee parking impacts in the residential neighborhoods. So with that in mind, the proposed modifications at the RH Gallery site include replacing the limited-service restaurant model, which is that counter-service, with a more traditional full-service restaurant where guests sit down and they're served at their tables. The applicant is proposing this in Building 1, which fronts onto Washington Street, and in that building there would be 60 seats, and on the front patio, there would be 32 seats. This change in use increases the parking demand by 23, and that's the difference from the retail standard for the limited service to the seat standard for the full-service restaurant. And the applicant proposes to satisfy the increased parking demand through maintenance and improvement of an off-site lot as well as valet parking, and that's an item that would be before you later this evening, but it's being continued, and that would have to be approved in order to meet the minimum parking demand. The amended hours of operation would be to push the opening hour earlier to 8:00 a.m. and to push the closing hour to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and midnight on weekends. And these hours are generally consistent with approved hours at other adjoining businesses, and notably Redwood Restaurant, which is approved until 2:00 a.m. both indoors and out. So those are the level of changes at RH. Now moving to Maison Rie, which the applicant would like to rebrand as RH Wine Vault, they also seek to replace the wine tasting room and retail diversity component with a full-service restaurant to allow the consumption of wine and the enjoyment of food together. And this would be available through 22 seats downstairs, 18 seats upstairs, and 54 seats in the garden and on the front patio. Again, this increases the parking standard for the property, and that's by 19 spaces. And again, it would be satisfied through off-site parking, should that be approved by the town council. And with regard to the Maison Rie use, I would note that the outdoor areas are not considered the use area of the business under the current permit, and that may be something that's changing under the modifications to ordinances for FAR and open space before you tonight. They are requesting to amend their hours, again, to open earlier at 8:00 a.m., but also to extend the close of the indoor operations until midnight on weekdays and 2:00 a.m. on weekends, and to extend the outdoor close of hours until 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and 10:00 p.m. on weekends. And as you note in the staff report, or as you will see, the staff was concerned with these hours of operation, and we've suggested a condition of approval that would bring these back to, for the indoor close for 10:00 p.m. weekdays and midnight on weekends, but for the outdoor hours to be 10:00 p.m. in the summer, which is June through September, but 9:00 for the balance of the year. And we threw those numbers out as a discussion point because those are consistent with the town's noise ordinance and the hours that are provided. Since publication of the staff report, however, we have heard from three neighbors of the Burgundy Commons neighborhood, all of whom believe that the existing noise at Maison Rie is far too great, and they do cite the special events that are the after-hours noise that they think is the worst source of the noise. And while the CMU wall that I mentioned, the eight-foot-tall wall that's a solid noise-attenuating wall, will be effective in mitigating some of that noise, neighbors have shared that the residential-commercial interface just puts too great of a burden on them with the commercial uses, that they can hear voices, that they hear music, that it's impacting their enjoyment. So a question is whether an intensification of use is appropriate for this site, and certainly with regards to use of the outdoor areas. And so we are seeking feedback from the council tonight so that the applicant can take that to make modifications and further home this project before it comes back before you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of the staff report from the council? Anyone would like to step forward and ask the first question? Councilmember Durham loves to ask the first question.
So currently, what is the outdoor seating at Maison Rie? 58?
There are currently 58 seats in the outdoor space, but those seats are not specifically as approved as to number because it's a wine tasting standard rather than a restaurant standard.
Okay. And they're asking for, RH is asking for 54, correct?
Correct.
And then, so there is no standard indoors for the seating to compare to what they're doing now, to what they, excuse me, to what Maison Rie is doing now, to what RH would do because of the two different uses?
Well, they're currently approved as retail uses, both for wine tasting and the limited-service restaurants, so we calculate parking based on square footage, and so number of seats is not specifically included in their conditions of approval. As they, if they move toward a restaurant standard, then the seats become all-important in determining whether the project would stay in compliance over time, not exceeding that number of seats.
Okay. And just to be clear, are we, would we hold RH Vault, Wine Vault, to the same standard then, even though the food isn't being prepared there? If I heard you correctly, it would be a limited-service situation at RH Wine Vault as opposed to RH Gallery, which would be a full-service restaurant? Is that correct?
No, they're proposing the employee service of guests at both locations, slightly different models. It's a fuller, more comprehensive menu at the gallery and a more limited menu options at the vault.
Thank you very much.
I want to follow up on what I thought I heard you say, is that the current Maison Rie use is already a limited-service restaurant? Is that what you just said?
No, no.
I didn't think so.
Yeah. Their wine tasting room with a retail diversity requirement.
So was that the answer that you heard?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
Thank you. If Maison Rie converts to the vault and becomes a restaurant, is there then a retail diversity requirement?
That requirement gets applied when the town council determines that there's an oversaturation of uses. It's been applied only to wine tasting rooms thus far, although it's not limited to applying to only that use.
So it would be in our discretion to determine that we would want a retail element in there?
Correct.
Thank you.
More questions?
Well, I'm kind of confused here. I came tonight, got an email expecting that this item was going to be polled, and we weren't going to have a full discussion and questions. I understand from staff now that you're looking for feedback to take it back to the applicant, but my preference tonight, I mean, I can certainly hear what the public has to say, that's always an option, but I'm not prepared to tell the applicant what I'm looking for and what I'm not looking for. I'd like for them to tell me what they would like, and then the public can react to that, I can react to that. So that's my position.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I have a lot of concerns about this proposal from the applicant, so I would like to hear from the public before I make any decisions about or have any questions. I think a lot of questions will be forthcoming.
Yeah, and this is really meant to be questions of the staff report, not general comments yet about the project anyway, but, okay, and I can save questions that I have for when we talk a little bit more about feedback. So with that, I don't believe we have any member of the applicant's team here. Is that correct?
The applicant does have representatives in the crowd.
Oh, is that right? Okay. So let's start with a member of the applicant team, if they would like to comment. I didn't see you in the crowded room that we have tonight. I'm not used to it.
Good evening, members of the, good evening, council members. Mayor Dunbar, Stuart Wagner, with Restoration Hardware, working on the planning and development side.
Jordan Brown with Restoration Hardware, I'm in the design side.
So earlier today, we requested a continuance. We respectfully request that continuance tonight as well, as we just kind of further assess the parking requirements and all the related issues that go with that. Don't feel anything else to add?
No, other than we're still, you know, in development and working our details out based on parking.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, does the council have any questions specifically of representatives at this point? No? We know we're going to be continuing the dialogue after tonight, but we'll hear from some of our neighbors, and you'll get more feedback, I have a feeling.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to begin from our audience? Somebody's got to. All right.
My name is Joanie Blair. I am representing the owner of the property. I am representing the owner of the property that I live at, at eleven Burgundy Way in Burgundy Commons. I sent a letter to all of the council members stating the concerns, both of me and the owner of the property. Something that I would be interested in finding out is, what I'm concerned about is the ingress, egress thing next to Masonry that goes into the private drive of Burgundy Commons. Where I live, when I'm sitting in my living room, reading or watching television, my front window is a, I can see what goes on there. You cannot believe how many cars pass that sign that says, "Don't enter," that this is a private drive. There are limousine drivers that come through and double park, waiting for their fares to finish their activities at Masonry. Something that I'm interested in is, I would like, and I have no way of doing this or knowing this, but I'd like to see what the easement situation was when this development of Burgundy Commons was originally done. The, you know, it's like a circular thing, there's, there's entrance from Washington Street on the south side, and then there's entrance or exit on the north side in that, where the parking lot, where Masonry is. And then next to that, I was shocked in seeing what the proposal is of having an actual pedestrian thing crossing over that. Another thing that comes to my mind, my husband happens to be a retired fireman and said, "What about the fire situation?" You know, and I have seen, if there was a, if there was a limousine parked there, and my neighbor parks his truck next to his house, there isn't any way that a fire truck or an ambulance could get in or out of there. So that's another concern. As far as the hours are concerned, the two o'clock in the morning, the, I can't imagine it being that much of a ruckus, but we can wait and see. Unfortunately, if we wait and see, it might be too late to prevent anything from, from being changed. I think that just before, there is a, an amendment to the proposals, that more study needs to be done, and to actually go there and see, actually do, whether you have to do a, a count of cars, or how the parking is. People get lost, they don't know how to leave, I think that's why they keep coming through that, through Burgundy Commons, and then they go out the other way. It is an issue, and it's an issue for the owner more than, than for me, but I really wish that you all would really, really look at what's going on there before any decisions are made. Thank you so much for having this meeting, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And Sandra, if I could just ask you to respond, you, feel free to take a seat. I think you mentioned it in your report, but let's just call it out again, what the current conditions prior to this amendment request involving an exit gate and how that flow was to be protected.
Right. Even if there are no approved changes to the project, they're required to install a gate at the exit drive from Burgundy Commons as it enters, as it nears the Maison Rie parking lot area, and that is to serve as a physical barrier to prevent drivers from reversing the one-way street. And it's an automatic sensor to allow emergency access vehicles to, to get to the site and maintain access. So, we are hopeful that will solve a lot of the existing circulation conflicts that exist now.
Could you also speak to the, the fact that it's a private road and what the town has authority over and what we don't have authority over in terms of controlling illegal parking or access? Or can we send the deputies in and ticket like we would on any other street?
We do not ticket on private property, we ticket on the public streets and the right-of-way. I guess unless requested, I think it may be possible, I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to...
The, the question being, you know, the, the comment was made about a car service blocking the, you know, basically it's one-way traffic in there, and if they're illegally parking there, what authority does the town have, if any?
Yeah, if I may, if it's in a properly marked red zone, it can still be towed and, and ticket as well.
But if it's idling in the middle of the private road, blocking the exit for a resident, then is it the jurisdiction of the town, or is it the property owners of Burgundy Commons that would need to deal with that?
I think there's two things to look at. One would be, i-if the signage, the entry is properly noted, and the person has no legitimate business to be on it, then they're trespassing on private property, so there's some, some opportunities. I would also think as part of the evaluation, it may be a prudent conversation to potentially look at the routing, the one-way routing perhaps changing so that the one-way came in at the Maison Rie, so the gate was there so that that would really prohibit people from getting in further. I mean, that may be something for us to, to put on our list with the RH team to talk with the Burgundy Commons neighbors. I mean, what I'm hearing is that people are coming in the entry, and then they're staging, so maybe if we reverse that or look at a double gate structure, there may be some opportunities to, to improve and try to address that neighborhood concern.
But even if nothing changes from what's already been approved, there is a gate requirement to stop wrong-way traffic from entering on the north, what's supposed to be exit. So that already exists, near where, you're talking about where you're living. We're talking about other impacts, you know, the noise, the hours of operation would be changes to what has already been previously approved, so. Who else would like to speak tonight? All right, you go, and then, then we'll go back to Tim.
Felix Flynn, sixty-seven, twelve Washington Street. Property owner kitty-corner from the proposed development and directly across the street from Maison Rie. Thank you to Mr. Steve Rogers and to my friend Josephine here for bringing up what I have observed over the last twenty-two years as being a very pertinent issue vis-à-vis the town's signage requirements. Now, thinking about the impact of proposed restaurant, or restaurants at those sites, there have been three restaurants there before. Originally Mom and Enos, Frankie Johnny and Luigi's, and then was it Peri Gianti, I believe. I came to this, these very chambers when Philippe Gianti was getting his final approval and permit, and supported him for his endeavor there, and noted that besides the obvious burden of employee parking, one of the issues was the, the signage directing visitors onto the back lot there was about this big. So on a night like this evening, nobody's going to see it. And even on a good night, people, I just observed anecdotally over many years, people would just park in the neighborhood. So in order to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods, I'm thinking, there has to be improved signage for whatever endeavor is going to be there at both of those sites to make it very obvious, whatever the solutions may be. Don't, you know, don't take the one-way road into Burgundy Commons, don't park in Noyo in the neighborhood, park in the designated parking that's been approved, presumably behind RH Vault, I think I got the name right. So signage, very important, to be illuminated, big enough so that even somebody with my near-sightedness can see it. That way, to enjoy, to enjoy RH Vault, I would go, oh, okay, pull in right there. And thank you very much for the creative solution about the employee parking. When I originally came to Yountville almost twenty-five years ago and purchased the property that we still own and are proud to own, that was the number-one problem. Employee parking in front of our house, blocking our gates, blocking our driveways. Thanks to the endeavors, the endeavor of the town, that has been mitigated by the, the no parking to corner signs, which I, we're very grateful for on behalf of ourselves and our tenants. Just showing, again, what Mr. Rogers brought up was how important signage is, to make it very obvious that, do this, don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin, Sandra, if you could speak to the change that's already been approved for traffic flow on and off the main RH gallery site, the fact that it's no longer a horseshoe turnaround, that there's one entry on the north side of that property, if you could just describe that?
There's one-way access at the north side of the property that comes in from Washington Street to a thirty-two-space parking lot in the rear, and then it's ingress and egress as it exits onto the North Block property. And all those properties, North Block and Washington Square, are all connected by those shared driveways back there.
So just to be really clear, in case people can't see that really small map up there, we're talking about immediately south of the driveway that you would take to go to Redwood or North Block Hotel, there currently is, there was an, an exit driveway there when it was the previous restaurants. That would be the only actual driveway onto that RH gallery site, the main building site. The exit from that would then be out the back end, basically, behind North Block Hotel on the highway side. So, there would not be an entry that used to be there on the south side of the, what used to be the restaurant.
Just the one, one of the, the second half of the, the horseshoe is eliminated. There is a pilaster at the, at the driveway entrance that will have a sign that indicates parking and valet in the rear, and it is, they are proposing larger copy for that so that it is visible.
Okay, thank you for that. Who's next? Mr. Kelly, I think you did have your hand up. Love it when people are raising their hands, that's, we're going to get spoiled.
Hello? My name is Tim Kelly.
We could raise that, there's a button on the right of the podium, you can actually raise the whole thing up if you need to.
Right hand.
You might be okay right there.
That's all right, everyone can hear me.
Yeah, that's fine.
My name's Tim Kelly with Kelly's Filling Station and Wine Shop, representing also Washington Square and R&amp;D Kitchen. I want to start just by thanking you for your statement on the town and commitment to diversity, I think that's great personally. Also wanted to just note on the state of the town that we did add Arena Gallery and Hunter Gather to the neighborhood, so, this year. So, I, I think some questions we have are all around parking, basically. We have tenants and have participated in the employee parking off-site and understand the proposed development for RH along the park, it's separate from that, but the fact that there's not really any signage there, I'm, we're curious about basically how the parking will be enforced, both for RH, but also for the employee parking program. In terms of both seasonality, but also just, especially in peak season when all those spaces are being used, I think we had questions, for example, when the stud, the parking study was conducted, was it during peak season or off-season? Because those park spaces do get used, as everyone knows, and my concern is just the shell game that could happen of cars getting moved around and how that's going to be enforced. I had a question, just to confirm, the way I read the report was that valet hours were going to be required during opening hours, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think what, what might be helpful for businesses that are participating in the employee parking program is basically, is there a total count of those that are being issued and a total count of spaces that are available? Because it's not really clear if that's being factored into these other considerations. When I read the report, it seemed focused on RH's impact to the park and then the public use of the park, but not necessarily factoring in sort of the natural, organic flow of people parking at the park and walking through north Yountville. I think we're excited about that opportunity, especially for our tenants, that this will add to the energy, and, and I think that it's to be commended that you guys are kind of embarking on this, but just, again, it boils down to parking and how that's going to be managed. And lastly, you know, we, you mentioned the driveway that we share, which is a fire lane, and just whether or not RH is going to rely on that for delivery trucks and circulation of delivery trucks, has that been clarified in terms of the use? And that's it?
Okay, thank you. I think as you take your seat, we'll ask staff and potentially our town manager to respond, maybe a little more explanation for, it would now be the right time to explain a little bit more of the parking situation, or is that for future conversation?
A couple of things. One, you're going into the project, you've done a lot of the exact application because the applicant requested continuance and to do the restructuring. A couple of comments that you are making there on the employee parking management and the proposed use because they're very different. The employee parking management, as the town requires, is the aspect that the council needs to be...
That the council's put in place so that we can identify and monitor where employees are parking. The first priority in the most recent projects that have been approved, the emphasis is on parking a majority of the employees on-site, and it requires sticker issuance. So, in some cases, some properties do not have enough parking and their employees. So we have designated zones. Those are not guaranteed parking and they're not purchased, acquired, with the exception that there are four spaces for arena galleries that we have allocated for. In the case here of the RH, the off-site parking would be principally dedicated, and it would be managed and signed. RH is proposing that the parking lot would be primarily designated as their employee parking and then valet overflow, and we've designated the ten spaces closest to the picnic area would be open to the public for use seasonally, which sort of reflects how that lower part. For the folks that may be familiar with this area, the property that we're talking about is unimproved along the westerly border of Yountville Community Park. It offers some informal parking currently, but is not fully developed. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of, you know, that would be dedicated off-site, and apparently there's some consideration on RH in terms of how they want to approach that.
So before you get off that, I, I think, I'm going to clarify what you just said, because I don't think the audience necessarily understands what unimproved means. So, there are, as any of you are familiar, up at the north end, there's a very severe grade there, basically, the first half of, from the point at the south end of the park, at least about halfway up, you can't park there unless you park in the lane, the traffic lane. What we're talking about is toward the northwest corner where there is, as Steve was describing, kind of unofficial parking, it's basically dirt and gravel, that would be made into more formal parking, and the, the very steep grade that is not parkable now would be improved to the point of being able to handle parking. So it's not necessarily parking that would be taken away, it would actually be added parking that would then have been, be dedicated to these business uses that we just talked about.
And the focus is on housing. The other thing that we're doing slightly different on newer project applications is we're analyzing and meeting with the applicant to truly understand their employee parking demand. The town has parking ratios, and the intent is that the parking ratio is to address both customer use and employee use. What we have found is that, in our experience, due to the high level of customer service generally delivered by most all of our businesses, but especially the restaurant industry, is that their actual employee count is significantly higher than that which the model was based on. So in this particular case, RH has had to work with us and actually submit a scheduled staffing, and we're mapping that out to know. So we're actually imposing a slightly higher parking ratio so that our, our goal in this particular case is to account for the employee parking so that they're not going to be migrating into the residential neighborhoods in the north Jefferson and the park area, because we do know that in some areas, that's what's happening. So we're, we're taking the council's direction to be more creative and look at alternatives with that goal in mind.
Thank you. And Sandra, are you prepared to answer the question about delivery vehicles and how they'd be getting on and off the parcel, or is that something still to be discussed with the applicant as we move forward?
Well, deliveries were addressed as part of the original application, I'd have to look into what the requirement was there. No changes proposed, but to maintain that existing condition, although I think it's fair to assume there may be more deliveries with the restaurant-related use.
And we would just need to be aware of what impacts, because we all know the turn lane gets used as a temporary... the turn lane gets used as a temporary parking for deliveries. And we have allowed that to happen to a degree because it's, the alternatives are challenging at best, so...
I know that there is an existing condition on the RH project that deliveries need to be made from the site. I just don't know what the circulation and access for that, those deliveries is.
Right, so we need to put a pin in that so you can follow up to get an answer for Mr. Kelly's question. Okay. Other questions, comments from, yes? Yeah, you just pull it down, that'll be, we'll be good.
Hi, I'm Jo Cruz. I live at 1 Burgundy Way, also known as Burgundy Commons. I'm a little concerned that this has become a conversation about parking. And I think that this project represents something much bigger than parking. First, I want to say, I am not anti-business. I'm not even anti-restation hardware. I actually love your product. However, you said earlier that it's the job of this council to protect the integrity of our neighborhood. There's a lot about this project that does nothing to protect the integrity of our neighborhood. Five years on Burgundy Way has taught me that Maison Rie does nothing, does not care about the 10 o'clock cutoff for noise, town ordinances about noise, about what is okay for noise. Maison Rie backs up to homes, that property backs up to residences, neighborhoods. The fact that this has now become such a big project, to me, is another example of bait-and-switch tactics that are being used by businesses in this community. It's that simple. Two restaurants, a bar, a retail outlet. What is happening to Yountville? I am really struggling to see how a project, a change to a project of this magnitude does anything to support the residents, does anything to protect the integrity of what Yountville says it stands for. We continue to struggle with noise issues. Yes, absolutely, the parking issue. Every time we have raised concerns about parking and noise among the residents of Yountville, we are told the canned answer, "Call the sheriff." Is that really the solution? We're gonna be a town that deals with these kinds of issues by taking emergency services out of circulation? Because another limo, another visitor to Maison Rie, to the French Laundry? I have talked to neighbors, I've experienced myself for five years. I've come home, I can't get into my driveway because there's limos, because there's cars. And when I've said something, I'm told, "Call the sheriff." We've had to listen to Maison Rie parties time and time again all summer long. My understanding is that that property has a limited number of events which they have clearly violated time and time again. And their solution is to send us little letters and to say, "Hey, we're having an event. We'll leave a bottle of wine on your doorstep." This is not acceptable. I'm really struggling to see how parts of this project, this amendment, is going to do anything to solve the problems we are already dealing with. And again, I want to be really clear, this is not about parking. This, parking is one issue. There is noise, there is foot traffic, there is trash that is left in our neighborhood from people working their way back up and down Washington. And calling the sheriff is not the answer. We've got to get to a point where we strike a balance. I truly, truly believe, I'm a businesswoman, I believe that every community needs to strike a balance between business and residence. I truly believe that. But the changes being proposed here tip that scale way over. And I'm just asking, I'm asking you to rethink this. Like I said, I'm not saying all of it, but there are elements here that have nothing to do with protecting the integrity of this town and certainly nothing to do with protecting the integrity of the Burgundy Commons residents. And I'm asking you to please rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we have not approved anything, yet. I just wanna make it clear that we have not even finished the conversation. The beginning of the conversation tonight has been about parking. That's not the end of the conversation. Nor have we approved any of the amendments that are being presented tonight. So let's just be clear about that. This is the beginning of the dialogue, and so there'll be more conversation, both by the council and with the public. So let's just understand that this is not a done deal. That's why we're having the conversation right now, but certainly appreciate your comments. Other members of the public like to speak? Yes?
Hi, my name's Pam Reeves. I live at 6887 Jefferson Street. And I would, I'm glad that I'm getting in on the beginning of the discussion rather than the end, which happened last time. So I'm ahead of the game here. But I would like to piggyback on the comments that were made by the previous speaker because I think this whole proposal, this intensification of the original proposal is a real good neighbor issue. Normally, you would expect people to deal with their issues on their own property. If I decided to remodel my house and eliminate my garage and expect that I could park somewhere else on my neighbor's yard, I think that would not be approved. I would not expect it to be approved. I think this is also a precedent that we don't want to set. Intensifying use next to residences where there's already an issue and additionally increasing parking issues in town sort of veiled on the idea that this is gonna solve some issues. But we've been told time and time again that parking is an issue in town, we need to solve that. But if we allow a lease arrangement where public right-of-way or public land is used for private businesses, I think that sets a precedent that we can't afford in this town. When, if someone was told in this application to go and be creative, I would hope we'd add a footnote to that statement that said, "Be creative in your business plan" rather than "be creative with our ordinances and our standards." This applicant is asking us to change our standards. And at this point, we are about to enter into the general plan discussions and revisions. And I think it's appropriate for us to discuss that there, but not in this individual application. It's, I think, not a good solution. The idea of a valet who is paid to park cars, who goes to the designated parking area, does not find a parking space, then trolls around the neighborhood and parks somewhere else because there's no parking in his designated spot, creates more traffic, more drive-bys of residences, more headlight activity, more noise, more pollution, all of those things. And that's not the solution that we as residents would like to see happen. If this person wants to be a good neighbor in their application, they should create their project to fit the standards. And if we always acquiesce to a very eloquent presentation or a very seductive elevation portrait, then we aren't upholding our standards that we've all agreed on, and this person gets something that no one else gets to have. And I think other businesses in town might look at that and say, "Oh, my turn." Or, "Oh, I'd like to do that too. Let's see where I can put my cars, and I'll do a valet, that'd be easy." But I think it doesn't further the ambiance of our town. And you might say, "Oh, well, the old general plan or the old Yountville isn't there anymore." But the only reason people want to build or live or visit here is because of the foundation of old Yountville, not the exceptions to the foundation. So I would really encourage the applicant to come back with something that fits Yountville's standards and ordinances so that it doesn't put the council in the position of approving something that is contrary to our regulations. And I think that the neighbors should be very much considered because we have very few permanent residents left in a lot of our neighborhoods. And those of us who are still here really cherish the old Yountville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come forward, share on this item? Yes, Mrs. Caldwell?
Hi, I'm Judith Caldwell. I haven't been here in a while because you've been doing such a great job. And I feel like I have to be here tonight because I feel you've heard everything that's been said tonight. I'd like to echo that. The general plan that was worked on decades ago was a heartfelt, head-felt plan where we saw the needs of this town at that time and looked forward to the needs of Yountville in the future. I know that you respect that, and I know you will continue to respect that. I have to just say, 2 o'clock in the morning doesn't work in the general plan or for our town. And I also know that we're being heard by the applicant because I saw facial expressions and head nods. And Steve, you and I have been through a lot of committees and councils and projects that I've been asked to please come and support verbally. My house hardware is from Restoration Hardware. I love the store. 2 o'clock in the morning doesn't fit with Yountville. I'm concerned about the project coming forward, but I do trust council. I have no reason to doubt you. And I do trust the people who work for the town. Please hear us. You have our voice tonight. I know that some people are not able to be here to speak their mind. There's a list. Hear us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'll invite the members of the council to share any other thoughts. Now would be the time, instead of just asking questions, if there are any comments you'd like to make on behalf of the applicants and the audience. I'll start with Member Dorman.
I would just like to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. It's really, really great to see public participation, and I hope you keep it rolling into a lot of projects in the future. Thank you.
Councilwoman Durham? Councilwoman Mueller? Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank you, I hear you. I too have reservations. I am encouraging the applicant to take all of this in and come back with something that we can really look at. I did want to clarify that the applicant was asking for midnight rather than 2:00 a.m. 2:00 a.m. was referenced about some other location, I believe. Is that correct? No, they are asking for 2:00 a.m.? I see.
The wine vault would be, is there, indoor wine vault operations would be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., according to the request.
I thought they rolled up the side, we rolled up the sidewalks at 10:30, but you know. But anyway, please take it to heart, but we don't mean any, we don't want to hurt your feelings, but please come back with something that we can all get behind.
Thank you. And I will, I mean, we've heard a lot about parking tonight. We hear a lot about parking at every application. Any of you that have been here or listened before, you all know that. I'm seeing a lot of smiles about that comment. So I feel like that's already been discussed enough. One thing that hasn't been really touched on, because there are a lot of moving parts to this application. Some of this application has been approved, but we're talking specifically tonight about the additional uses and extended services and things like that. And I will say, I'm going to keep an open mind as we come forward with the continuation of this public hearing. However, I have serious concerns and reservations about principally the RH Wine Vault Maison Rie intensification. Let's not forget two things. We heard the history of, of the main RH Gallery site has been a restaurant for many, many years, many iterations. A very large restaurant at one point. So I don't see the use, as we have approved it, being really any different than that. I do see a difference on the Maison Rie parcel that has been a bed and breakfast and has been an art gallery slash wine tasting area. To go to a full-service restaurant, I have serious reservations for that, regardless of the times we're talking about. It's the intensification of that use. I'm also, this is almost an aside, but I know that the applicant's analysis was that the structural modifications don't impact the historic integrity of the building. I'm not convinced of that. I would want to see our own analysis of that rather than you telling us that your people say it's okay. I remember the hoops that we required when the original conversion from a bed and breakfast to Maison Rie occurred. We were very tight about protecting the historic integrity of that building. And so I would want our own confirmation, whatever that takes, to, if we move forward with changing doors and windows and things like that, that we are not impacting the historic value of that property. And maybe that's true, but, and it's not that I don't trust you out of, you know, out of hand, but we hear a lot of things from applicants, and I'm just a little cautious about that. So I'm very resistant to the use permit modifications specifically to the proposed wine vault site. I absolutely agree about the very late hours of operation. I know that typically what happens is a business asks for the broadest terms possible, and frankly, business tells you otherwise. We have a restaurant that can stay open till midnight. There aren't many nights that they have anyone in there at midnight. They have the ability to do so. I think we have one business in the very near vicinity of our discussion tonight that does have late-night activity. It's about literally the only place in town. And so, again, a lot of smiles out there. You know what I'm talking about. So my, my general comments really are, where there had been a fairly comparable intensity of use, I'm much more open-minded about what you're talking about. Going from what we were told was gonna be a modest breakfast and limited lunch café because that's what was missing in town and the president and CEO of the company was just looking for somewhere to get a cup of coffee. I mean, I remember that, that it was a very compelling presentation. Then to go to a full-service restaurant is something different. I'm, again, I said, "That used to be a full-service restaurant," I get it. But next door, I'm not so sure. So that's the feedback I'm going to give you. Just a very quick about the parking. We have heard in our neighborhoods, not just at the north end, but especially recently at the north end of town, try to protect our neighborhoods. And we, I think, have done a very significant effort to that end. I think not just Steve Rogers, but our whole land use and planning department have been very creative about how do we find solutions. And Mr. Kelly has gone through it for a couple of years now to find ways that we can mitigate impacts to neighborhoods and better use our public parking. It isn't private property, it's our best use of public property so that we can, we can put people in parking spaces that are not impacting the neighborhoods. And that's what we're doing. We have to just kind of work out the numbers. I'm not worried about the model. We'll figure out the numbers eventually, once we determine the intensity of use. So there are some other things that we will need to address, the Burgundy Commons access. We had a very extensive conversation... We had a very extensive conversation about protecting the illegal use, the wrong-way use of the exit driveway. If we need to continue to revisit that, we absolutely will. We're not going to just rely on residents taking reaction into their own hands. I'm also a little bit concerned about what we're being told today as a retail use or with the type 42 license from ABC, that today it's a restaurant, but, you know, what are the potential intensifications beyond that level? We have to think to the future. If, if we were to approve the RH Wine Vault as a full-service restaurant, and it has a type 42 license, what else might come in the future? Is that an additional use? Is it wine sales? Is it something other than a restaurant use because the license could allow it? We have to protect ourselves from making decisions based on guessing what might happen in the future, but we need to be smart about it and aware of it. So I've spoken enough, and I think our applicant representatives have heard all of us, including all of you in the audience, and we will, I think, unless I need to do otherwise, I would entertain a motion for a continuance to either a date certain or a date not certain. So is there any other comment from the council, or can we entertain a motion to continue this item?
Make a motion to, sorry, make a motion to continue this item to a further date not yet determined.
And I need to leave the public hearing open, right, Gary? Now, or should I close it now and reopen it? Before we continue it?
You can close it and then continue.
Okay, so I'll just formally close the public hearing, and there's been a motion to continue this item. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So thank you all very much for that dialogue. The dialogue will continue when we do have this reset, and again, you will all be notified when we continue the conversation. Okay, let's now move on to our next item, which is 11A. And I, so we have no reason to have any conversation about that. Okay. Do we need to take any action to continue that?
Well, there's a question. Until we have a, until we have an application, we can do the confirmation.
So that's a no.
Correct, correct. No action needed.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. We are now going to go back to our item 10A that we put off, which is the municipal code amendment discussion. And if staff is ready for that conversation, let's have it.
Great. Thank you, council. So before you this evening is a, to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance 17458, which amends portions of the Yountville municipal code sections regarding open space and floor area ratio requirements and definitions. Now, this evening I will, the staff report's going to be sort of separated into two spots. First, we'll talk about the ordinance and what, kind of, a little bit of the history of it and the modifications to the code that the ordinance would do. And then also, the second part would be talking about a potential pilot program that affects a few businesses here in town. So first, to talk about this ordinance, this is actually the fourth public hearing regarding this topic. First, many of you remember that on May 17th of last year, the Zoning Design Review Board and the town council met in a special joint meeting to discuss two topics. One was noise, which led to the recent noise ordinance, and the other one was FAR and open space, FAR being floor area ratio. At that meeting, there were several things that the two bodies agreed on, primarily that the term of FAR and open space and use area were all three completely separate things. And as the municipal code currently stands, they often overlap. And so the purpose of this ordinance is to provide clarification on those terms. So then on September 13th, the ZDRB had an additional meeting to discuss a potential draft ordinance. And at that meeting, the board agreed on the following themes, that first, FAR is really meant to control the massing of a development, to control and fully understand building massing. Open space is the opposite of that and should be treated as such. And then lastly, they also agreed that it should be the prerogative of the business or developer to determine how public or private their open space should be. Then on December 13th, the board unanimously, unanimously recommended the approval of draft ordinance, and this ordinance is what we will be discussing this evening. Now, to talk a little bit about what the current requirements are and how the ordinance would change some of the terms we're looking at, I admit that the ordinance is full of a lot of wordy terms, and so I've drawn some pretty pictures that might help us understand it a little bit more. So let's say that there's a development. I'm going into hypothetical mode to help explain some of the changes. So if you look at the monitor, we'll have one parcel that happens to have two buildings on it. In building A, there's a tasting room, and in building B, let's say there's a restaurant. Under the current code, the space that isn't part of the building is common usable open space. When that was developed, there's the requirement that that open space shall be used for the public. So even if you are not a patron of these businesses, you are allowed to get a hot dog or a taco or any food of your choice and go enjoy it in that open space. And that is a requirement, that that open space must remain public. After hearing from the two boards off of our various public hearings, the, the conversation included potentially having private open space now being involved. So if a business wishes to still have open space but make it more private, have them have control of it, that is in their prerogative to do so, such as a outdoor dining area of a restaurant. We see plenty of restaurants in town that have tables outside that are not affected by FAR. If a table is outside, that doesn't now all of a sudden make the building bigger. It just means the use area of that restaurant has expanded to outside. So what this ordinance is going to do is clear up some of the confusion that our current definitions have. FAR under the new ordinance applies only to the building massing of building A and building B. The use does not affect FAR, whether it's a restaurant or a hotel or whatever it may be. It doesn't affect the size of the building. Landscape elements do not affect FAR. Accessory buildings like a trash enclosure do not affect total FAR, a floor area ratio. Now, second, use area, hope these colors aren't too bright. Use area is defined in the use permit stage, and it is used to address parking impact, noise, hours of operation, et cetera. The tasting room in building A has its use area, which includes the outdoor area and their private area that they've now hypothetically wanted to create. Parking is determined by the square footage of the total use area. Under current standards, we would only look at what is in the building. When clearly, if the use is branched out, that should be addressed as well. The restaurant also has its use area. Parking is determined by the square footage of the use area, if it's a limited service restaurant. And if it's full service, it's determined by the number of seats in there. Okay? So the goal of the ordinance is to take the responses that we've heard, that staff has heard from the ZDRB and the town council, and to simplify things and to clarify things. In that attempt, it has resulted in several edits. If you, I'm referring to page three of the staff report, where there is a, kind of a list of bulleted sections of the municipal code that are being edited in efforts to make these revisions. So first, the definitions, there's now a more clear definition for carport when there wasn't one before. We removed the detailed explanation of floor area ratio from a definition and just gave it its own section. It's an important enough topic, it deserves its own section, by golly. Then we, also, the ordinance removes the designation between commercial floor area and residential floor area because the board and town council agreed that FAR is about building massing and not use. There's no need to have different definitions about commercial floor area or residential floor area, which is why there's now a definition for use area, which is tied to a use permit, and it will be separate measurement. Floor area ratio now has that new section that kind of goes into what my attempt of a beautiful drawing explained. Requirements by land use type are now edited with this ordinance that would remove the requirement of tying commercial parking requirements to floor area, but instead have the parking requirements be tied to use area. There's also extra clarification for open space. And one of the things that was a theme of the ZDRB was to remove the requirement that open space should be visually accessible to the public. What was spoken before, there was a lot of confusion about public open space, and members of the board thought, well, that sounds like a park. If a business wants to have a courtyard, they shouldn't be required to have it also be the same use as a public park. So that was one of the themes taken from the ZDRB that is up for discussion with the town council this evening. It's also been brought to our attention earlier today that there were two parts in our draft ordinance that were somehow missed. One of them is the exemptions of floor area ratio is landscape elements. For some reason, that was deleted. It didn't need to be. Landscape element is exempt from floor area ratio. The other one is wordage later on about, the word exclusive was removed, that doesn't need to be removed. So it was added back in, and that will be shown in the second reading, should that be the choice of the council. So that is the ordinance. I want to now just take a little bit more of your time to talk about a potential pilot program that is up clearly simply for council discussion. No action needs to be taken tonight on this pilot program discussion. Staff is just simply seeking your feedback and input on it. So there are several wine tasting rooms that currently allow their guests to utilize open space that might be near the business. That is not, right now, private open space. It would be similar to this, where it's common usable open space. The businesses per their use permit are within their right to have their guests present in these areas, enjoy wine, but the service is not permitted in the space as it's not part of their use area. So parking demand has not been assigned to the businesses for the use of this outdoor area, and in all cases, the business is not in a position to add any additional parking spaces. Since guests are already using these outdoor areas, significantly increased guest counts would not really be expected, should service now be granted in these areas. So with this in mind, staff believes that there might be merit in exploring the use of a pilot program that would permit tasting rooms that meet a certain criteria to increase their use area without providing additional parking spaces. So the minimum criteria that a tasting room would need to meet, and all of this is outlined on page four in the staff report, if you want to follow along, the minimum criteria that the tasting room would need to meet would include, one, that the business's guests must already use the space regularly per the approved use permit. And second, that adding service to the area would not require additional staffing. If both these criteria are met, then the business could apply for a use permit amendment which grants use of the open space without triggering an additional parking, since they would be able to prove that it would not increase their staffing levels nor increase their guests. A cursory review of use permits indicated that Gerard Stewart Sellers, Jessup Sellers, JCB and Priest Ranch could meet this first prong, this first criteria noted above, where they already have members of the public regularly using this outdoor space, though service is a violation. If these businesses were to be able to prove that now allowing service in this open space would not result in additional staff and therefore not create an additional parking burden, then it might be something to consider, having them be able to now use that with a use permit amendment. That amendment would also trigger then a participation in the town's parking management program if they are not already doing so, to ensure that employees are parked in the designated and appropriate spaces. Now, this program would be beneficial to the town in several regards. First, town staff has heard from the hospitality industry that guests frequently request this level of service. It would enhance the vibrancy of the town's streetscape, which is universally accepted as a quality of a great city and a great community. And third, when outdoor areas are actively used, it actually encourages people to venture forth on foot rather than getting back in the car if they can see the street is active. Now, this program was brought before the Zoning and Design Review Board during the September 13th meeting, and overall, the board was opposed to the program. The majority of the board felt that the businesses understood parking requirements before they opened, and ignoring the standard now would lead to comments from other businesses wanting to know why the standards do not apply universally. So now, staff is asking the town council to consider this potential program while also keeping the opinion of the ZDRB in mind and talk about the possibility of adopting this program for these select wine tasting rooms that might meet this criteria. So the two talking points is the ordinance and then the pilot program.
So you're not asking for action on the pilot program?
Feedback.
You're just asking for feedback, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions? Let's start with the first part, which is the ordinance. If there are any questions about the staff report related to the ordinance specifically, not the pilot program yet. Questions? Any other questions about the pilot program? They've covered it all, apparently.
You're all exhausted. This is wonderful.
It's the drawings. Continue with the drawings in future meetings. There will be no questions.
Yeah, I might add a third color next. Thank you.
I'll invite members of the public that I know are here that have thoughts on this item. Yes, we'll start. Normally, I wouldn't allow someone who sits all the way in the very back to be the first speaker. You're encouraged to sit up front, but since almost everyone left.
Yeah. James Stewart, 6752 Washington Street, Stewart Sellers. And so I'm really just kind of coming to offer some sort of real data about what we're seeing in our business as it relates to the staff report for a pilot program. So, you know, I've talked to staff about this and read the ordinance before, or the potential program prior to coming here. And the big concerns, it looks like, are, you know, parking, you know, we are up against a residential neighborhood, so that's a concern, hours of operation, I'm sure, and then staffing. So I just wanted to give some information about like how we see things functioning now that could sort of have an impact on making decisions about whether or not to use a pilot program. So currently, we have two courtyards. We have the main, we have a front courtyard that is right on Washington Street, that we don't do any wine service, and we don't allow any of our customers to drink wine out there either. That is an area that we reserve solely for the Gather Cafe, which, by the way, 50% of our customers are locals. And then the central courtyard, we use for both functions. And so there are two little areas and, that sit about eight people per little coffee table spots, and then a long table that sits, seats 12 people. People do come and get a tasting flight in the tasting room, which is four wines. We have two flights with four wines. And they will take their glass out with their one and a half ounce pour and sit, you know, outdoors, and then basically, anytime they want their next tasting, they get up one at a time and come back in and refill their glass. And so on one hand, it's a little, you know, it has been awkward at times to explain to them why we can't service them outside, but more importantly, though, is that we don't, we haven't seen a need for any additional staff with this. And when it is being used for, you know, people's tastings outside, we don't see any need for additional, you know, seating, we don't see any need for additional parking, and we don't see any need for additional staff. So a pilot program for Stewart Sellers, I don't know about the other businesses, all it would entail is being able to walk out with the person's next tasting rather than having them get up, you know, four or five times to come in. And that would be a benefit to our business, but it's certainly not required to have a successful business model. So our current permit and the way our business functions is working out really, really well. If we could have this pilot program, that would be great, too. But, you know, I think we're just one business, there are other ones to take into consideration as well. So, and if I can help at all, just let me know. Open book. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Ms. Waldorf, yes, of course. Mr. Wallenbrock, yes, of course. He rose his hand, he raised his hand, so we gotta...
I have a frozen shoulder, and that really hurt to do that. Oh, watch this.
You've been here before.
This would help, Steve. You feel really good. Judd Wallenbrock, I'm the president of Jessup Sellers, the Next Door Neighbors, and I want to thank you, Nathan, for sending this out to me, because I think it's great. We had been talking about this for a long time, and at Jessup Sellers, we adhere very strictly to the rule that we don't serve people out on the little patio that's out in front there. And I believe that, given the opportunity to serve people out there, it does exactly what you're talking about. I love the term you use, enhance the vibrancy of the street. We have lots of people who come. Two of the partners in the company are from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And let me just tell you, in March, in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, it's not the best weather. When they come to California, they see the mustards, they want to sit out in the sunlight and just enjoy a glass of wine or have a tasting outside. They are like so many people that are coming from the Midwest or from the East during the, during that time period. It's just, it's what they expect when they come to California, to actually enjoy the And just like James said, to open the patio to something like this, it's not going to make or break our business, it's just really going to make a happier customer. It's not going to influence whether or not we have to hire anybody more. We're certainly not going to. I'm not interested in hiring more people, and it certainly wouldn't impact any of the parking that we have in there for Jessup Sellers. It's just a really a benefit, I think, for the customer. That's about all it is. And I think the best way to do it is exactly what you're talking about, a pilot program. Let's test this and see how it works and see what we can do. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, it's your turn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Sean Rooney. I'm with Gerard Winery. We are at 6795 Washington Street, and I would like to say that thank you very much, Mr. Steele, for the use of your pictures. I can just to eliminate, to illustrate, my point is that with Gerard, much to the same as Jessup Sellers and also Stewart Sellers, we do not foresee any need to increase staffing based off of, if the pilot program were to go forward, we would be happy to be a part of it and do whatever we can to be a part of it. To use the pictures illustrated above, the open space that is common before us and our tasting room actually doesn't have the big blue block next to it, so it is just a little patio in front of our tasting room. It is common space. We welcome it. We, you know, all we want to do is be able to give the elevated experience to our guests, as what was said by Mr. Jessup over there. Is the only thing difference that's going to affect us is the ability to go out and talk to our clients outside, which not only is it going to increase the vibrancy of the cityscape, it's also going to be happier people in the town of Yountville. So then, they don't have to get up and walk back, and we don't have to say anything along the lines, is that we just can't go out there. It really just increases everybody's happiness, and we would be happy to be a part of a pilot program. We would not see any increase of staff, in staffing at all, and we would do whatever we needed to do to be a part of a pilot program. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Felix Flynn, 6712 Washington Street.
Drop, bring that down just a little.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Town Council Mayor. I represent the residential property that is at the apex of all of this commercial endeavor, and I just don't see where this pilot program as such protects the integrity of our, of North Yountville at all. It's more of the same. It's more of what we were just talking about half an hour ago, increase and intensification without any real consequences. If a pilot program were in fact put into place, I would like to see very exact metrics introduced that show the impact currently and the impact as is. Could be as simple as a spy going there, enjoying a glass of wine and observing. Anything anecdotal that could come back as real observation to the town council would be meaningful. We can't allow this commercial creep. It seems so innocuous. I noticed that not a single one of these people from the wine industry even proposed the idea of measuring the impact on the neighborhood. And I just don't like the attitude. It is undermining the integrity of our neighborhood, and I'd really like to see, as this becomes more and more intensified, and the likelihood of all of these businesses upping the ante, that there is some sort of A, B, or C comparison that could really show, rather than just have somebody come up here and say, "It's my opinion that," could really have a very positive impact, and something that Nathan could put into his report and say that, okay, prior to, this is what we had, and afterwards, this is what we have now. But more, more to the point, it's that, given the likelihood or the intensification of RH's use or reintroduction of a retail restaurant space, along with street-side wine service, as a residential occupant or owner of this town, it does not bode well. I would at least like to see me proven wrong by the introduction of any sort of metrics, study, formal, informal, just anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'll ask Nathan to maybe elaborate a little bit more. I was quickly scanning through your analysis of the pilot program. How would you expect an execution of that program or evaluation of that program to happen?
Well, first, what was just written briefly here, which is one of the reasons why this conversation is good and we want to hear the feedback, is what we felt, the staff felt was really important were those two criteria, that at a minimum, first, the business's guests must already use the space regularly per the approved use permit. So using Gerard as an example, there's already people on the deck using it. They are just returning inside to get their wine and then going back out to sit. And so, knowing that there's already guests using the space is the first very important criteria to consider, because then that would guarantee that there wouldn't be an extra impact of now more guests coming, because guests are already using the space. Then, second, that adding the service to the area would not require additional staffing. By having these businesses participate in the parking management plan, they'd be able to show us before, this is how many staff we have, and then now, my, the staff are registered in the parking management plan and have parking tags. And so, part of the ongoing enforcement of this plan is to see where are those cars parked, and making sure they're staying in the designated spots and not creeping into the neighborhoods. So those would be the two ways to kind of tackle that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I would also add to that, I think, to speak to the concern that we just heard, is that our staff, principally the two of you, Cassandra and Nathan, and potentially others, go and monitor and evaluate operations so that you go find out if they're in compliance or not.
There's businesses here...
And you would do that in this case as well.
There's businesses here that can testify of how frequently staff is monitoring the parking management plan.
That would allow you to create that, as we were talking about a nexus or some kind of matrix of numbers. If we have a business that says, well, we're not going to hire any new staff, and you go and you do your secret shopping type thing, and you see that they have new staff on, they would be violating that agreement, and there would be whatever ramification that we discuss in the future, we deem appropriate for that. Is that basically how that would happen?
Absolutely. If the council does proceed saying this is something they'd be interested in doing, then the businesses may have the opportunity to come together and have a use permit amendment, kind of a combined thing under one council item, where council would be able to approve the conditions of said approval, and that's when we could spell out more of the ramifications for violation.
And I'd also like to remind the council and the public, we also have imposed the annual conditional use permit review. So in addition, that's a requirement now that we're going into all of the businesses going through and reviewing. I also think that if there's some other thoughts that the council has, you know, part of our effort was, there was some conversation at the joint council ZDRB meeting about, hmm, if we're going to clean up some of these things, and we've already addressed it, there was some indication from the council that there might be interest in looking at something like this in a fairness and equity. So if you have some additional concerns or thoughts, we'd want to hear them in order to put them into a potential pilot program. And conversely, it's your all's prerogative to tell us, no, we're not interested as well. We thought we heard from you that there was some interest on a very limited basis. And again, what I will point out, we will also document, so for example, and I'm just gonna, Mr. Rooney presented a nice illustration for Gerard. So I mean, it's really easy for us to go out and know how many tables and chairs are there, and to make sure that all of a sudden, it didn't grow. So I mean, we'd be sitting down with everybody and having some rules and some meaningful, and I don't disagree with Mr. Flynn's comments about what are some metrics for analysis. So that also means we're going to need the potential applicants, to be honest with us, about their employee count and a variety of things, and some affidavits, so that we're able to go back. And the consequence is that they'd be in violation of their conditional use permit. That has serious consequences and can result in $1,000 a day fine and ultimately revocation of their use permit. So we've found that most of our businesses, when we get to that level, which we really do not like to get to, and we try to educate and work with them. So it's really a question for the council. Did we hear some of your interest in putting something together, correct? Were there some thoughts? And then, again, this is more feedback, and then we need to bring it back to you. It's an offshoot of your, going back to the joint, excuse me, the joint ZDRB and council, it was an offshoot of some of the open space use and FAR discussions. So we're here for your feedback and guidance, so that we can shape a program if you're interested, or if not, we move on.
Nathan, do you see this extending, let's, in hypothetical, before we have the council discussion, this, you're focusing this right now on wine tasting only. Do you anticipate, if we wanted to move forward on this, that we would be looking at potentially restaurant use in some of the, there are only a few areas that I could immediately think of. We do have a few that have open space, non-table service, tables and chairs, where people go in and get their order and then go out without any service from the business. So...
While that's ultimately the decision of the council, right now, we're only focused on these particular wine tasting rooms, because there's already use in those outdoor areas. If the restaurant, for instance, would like to now use that outdoor space as their service area, and they now want to serve people there, well, they've now changed to a full-service restaurant rather than a limited service, and so those seats would be counted in any use permit amendments.
So that's the fundamental difference, you, sorry to talk over you at the very end there, but that's the fundamental difference that you would see, that with a restaurant, having somebody from inside the restaurant delivering food to the table is not the same as allowing someone to come out and pour a second or third tasting of a flight. You see those as...
Based on the current definitions of our code, wine tasting room, those actions are different than a full-service restaurant.
Cassandra's nodding affirmatively. So that, that's both of your analysis, then, there would be a difference there.
Yes.
So it's not necessarily, this program would morph into something else. Okay. So since... Yes. I was going to ask if the council had any other questions about the pilot program, since that's what we were just talking about. You good, or, yeah, Councilor Mueller?
Can you go into some more detail about some of the ZDRB comments? I heard that they were very opposed to that. You mentioned one of them, which was very clear and makes a lot of sense to me, but can you tell me more about what the other ones had to say?
The, when I say one, I was, that was mainly one theme that several members shared.
No, I understand the theme.
Another one was, and there might be someone up that might offer more input, one of the issues was also when it came to metrics, as to how would we get that data and would that data even be successful in determining whether this program is successful or not. There were many more questions raised than answers provided during those times, and so the board at that time felt concerned with recommending approval for this, and that's why they've recommended not approval. I'd say those were the two biggest two themes.
So another question, would that be in, if they did serve, it would be in their open space?
Correct.
And so, then that would affect our discussion possibly about whether that's public versus private open space.
Correct. And so, what would need to occur in order for a pilot program to be approved is it would need to be approved as a very specific use permit amendment for that business individually, where it was clearly stated what the conditions are. When it comes to public or private, it doesn't necessarily make that use private now, it just allows pouring to occur in the public space.
Yeah, but when you see wine tasting going on, all the tables are full, I'm not going to probably sit down and eat my hot dog.
Absolutely.
Right.
One of the things that was brought up in the combined meeting was that idea already permeates, that someone would feel uncomfortable seeing customers using the pour, even if they're going inside to gain the pour, and they're going and sitting back down, people still feel uncomfortable having a taco at that space.
Maybe, maybe not, but...
Yeah.
One last question I have in terms of, you said that if the space is already being used for their customers. So I've noticed that at one wine tasting room, they used to do a lot of illegal pours outside. We said, no, you can't do that, as per your use permit, and now, nobody goes out into that open space. Do you consider that used open space now or not-used open space?
And that's when it would be the job of the business to prove that criteria, based on what we've discussed here.
Well, I'd say we're also looking at the original approved use permit for the business. For example, Stewart is permitted to use the outdoor area. Guests are permitted to go out there.
Right, because it's a use permit.
They're just not permitted to serve. An example would be Silver Trident is an example of one that is not permitted to use the outdoor area. They, they have that front patio, but it was not considered when their use was approved that that was an area to go and sit.
I mean, that little tiny, like...
Yeah, the entry with the red carpet.
Yeah, exactly.
Three by five foot carpet.
Another example would be Hope and Grace. While there's the interior courtyard, their permit doesn't entitle them to have the casual use of that area. So we're really looking at the five tasting rooms that we've called out in the staff report. It's limited to those. Those can meet the first prong of this program, and they'd have to demonstrate that no new employees are necessary. And in that case, we don't see more, no new employees, really no more guests. We don't see a parking impact.
I'd also like to say that, remember, this is not, this is a concept discussion. So I want to let everybody know that we've got more work to do if this is something you tell us you'd like us to do and bring you back something, but if you're also not interested, we need to know that, so that we don't do that. So I guess saying, I also want to remind that one of the things that we've talked about for all of our open space is signage, and we've heard that earlier, and we've had some council discussions. So clearly, that would be one of the requirements that we would put into this program, so that the public would know they're welcome to go sit there. But anyway, it's really more of a conceptual, this is not a finished, it's got some themes introduced. We need to go back and put together a little more of the details and the specifics in order, you know, if there's an interest. I just want to make sure this is not meant, and it's not an action item. I want to stress that as well. It's a concept discussion to give us feedback, and then it will determine if it comes back for future action.
So I'm going to jump back to our action item, because I, I think that that may impact what we're talking about. I understand. So I want to refocus our discussion about the introduction and waving and reading of the ordinance before us. So we did hear comments specifically related to the pilot program. I want to invite anyone that wants to speak to the ordinance itself to come forward now. So Debbie, if that's you?
My name's Pam Reeves. 6887 Jefferson Street. I, I wanted to back up, actually, to the ordinance anyway, because I, I find that it's a really interesting way to accomplish what has been eluding us for a very long time as parking requirements. And I really applaud the ZDRB and staff for coming up with that idea. Makes perfect sense. But I would also like to have more information, town-wide information, about how this would change what parking looked like in existing locations. So if we calculated the, the use area of Bouchon Bakery and the bakery itself and all of that, what would their parking requirements be versus what they are required right now? And do that with every business that has open space or use space that's not calculated in their act... in their actual building. And then you would come up with actual numbers of parking spaces we don't have. And at that point, you would then look at what other creative solutions we can come up with for parking. And I would ask that to be done with these suggested pilot businesses as well, because there's no doubt that parking is already impacted by the fact that people use the outdoor spaces as well as the indoor spaces. So the idea that that's not going to change doesn't mitigate the fact that it's already a problem. So I would like to see what those numbers looked like, and then how each business might be able to acquire or utilize their current parking lot space, using things like was suggested for the last applicant, valet parking or tandem parking, or, you know, those kinds of parking solutions on their own property first, and then work towards using common area parking, or working with other businesses who could create more parking in their space, in their parking areas using valet parking techniques. And then, it would seem that there would not be need for a pilot program. Once the number of parking spaces were identified, then everyone would get together, who had a business, who wanted to utilize their outdoor space, would come together and create parking solutions within the business community. And then, if there were overflow that was needed, using public spaces as the last resort, not the first resort. And I absolutely agree with the businesses that people expect to be outside, and I think that it makes the town look silly for not allowing them. But on the other hand, we have to do our homework in order to make it a viable option for them to be served outside. So that's what I think should happen before a pilot, because that seems discriminatory and also available to more recent additions to the town versus older businesses to the town. So I think we have to keep that in mind as well.
And I knew you were Pam, sorry. I knew you were Pam, not Debbie, sorry. Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment about the ordinance in particular? Seeing no more public comment, I invite staff or council to consider, let's talk about the ordinance first. Who would like to start that conversation? Vice Mayor, you seem ready.
So about the ordinance and the way it addresses open spaces, my understanding of it is that the FAR is how you judge the mass of building on a piece of property. And then the open space is the opposite, it's open. But I see that in here, in 17.88.030, that, no, no, excuse me, 17.96, that you're asking us to remove the requirement for usable, common, open space to have no obstructions and to not be fenced or screened. And I think that once they screen or fence those open spaces, they're no longer open spaces, and they're no longer the usable, common, open space that somebody could take their hot dog and sit in, are they?
That's correct. That language is included and they're based off the ZDRB opinion that a business may use their property the way they want to use it. And so if they wanted to screen it off or fence it off in after-hours in order to remove liability, they would be permitted to do so. Or if they wanted to put up a fence that was three feet tall in order to honor the fence requirements, they'd also be permitted to do so.
And is there a limitation to three feet tall fences around public open spaces?
It falls in line with the fence and wall requirements of all structures, residential or commercial, that if it's in the front setback, can't be taller than three feet, and if it's on the side yard or backyard, can't be taller than six feet.
Okay, so, but in the evenings, if they wished, they could fence off their property so no one could see it or use it? Is that what this would accomplish?
I don't know if necessarily so they can't see it or use it, but in order to protect the liability of the business was one of the things that members of the ZDRB had mentioned.
And something of that nature would also be subject to design review. So if it's a solid six-foot wood enclosure that really blocks views, I think that's all part of the discretionary process versus something that might be more open but could limit physical access. So the rules sort of play into one another.
Well, if it limited physical access, is that then taking it away from the open space element of the property?
No, because by the new definitions, the attempt is to separate out the built environment and the four walls of the building as FAR, and that which is open in landscaping as open space, and allow some level of reasonable fencing as long as that quality of open space comes through. The goal is that it's open and inviting still rather than closed off, and design review is how hopefully that is achieved. It may be that we could include some additional language to the intent of this section to really make that clear, that this open and inviting nature is the goal of open space rather than fencing it off and enclosing it, if that's a concern.
Okay, for now, that's my question. Thank you.
Hold on just a sec, Councilor Durham, and then...
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Vice Mayor was saying, when handwritten approached with their design, the open space was in the middle of the building, down a walkway, correct? So ultimately, it's, so, there's so many different definitions of open space that ultimately, they're going to put a fence up to protect their asset at night, correct?
No, they're not approved for a fence, and neither is pre-strange.
Or a gate, right, correct.
The idea is that between the buildings, you see this open space, and while you don't see all four corners of it, it breaks up the release of the building mass.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilor Mueller?
Is there any situation where open space and use area can count the same? I know there's a differentiation between parking, and that's really how you separate the two. But, and actually, I'm coming back to Maison Rie and possibly, you know, RH, they're going to want tables out in the front, this is what they're going to propose, and we don't know where we're going to go with this, out in front. Is that use area? Or is that open space?
I think a good example is Hurley's. The Hurley's patio is both open space and use area, and all of those seats are assessed as impact as to parking, of course, as to noise and everything else, but it's in a commercial zoning district.
So Hurley's is kind of the prime example, there may be other ones, of private open space.
Yes.
But this is because it's probably been grandfathered that way, perhaps.
I would say Maison Rie is another good example, because it has that low three-foot wall fence, you can't walk into it just off the street, but you can view it and look at it. Although I would say, no, that's a poor example, because they are permitted to wine tasting out in the garden, based on the time that permit issued, whereas now they would need to provide parking, and they didn't in that case.
Well, for now.
Comments? Councilor Durham?
Of course, I have a lot of comments. I've never met an ordinance I didn't like. I went full-on nerd, and I have nine annotated pages, which I will not go through tonight and probably ever except with staff, but...
It's longer than the...
I know, I know.
The ordinance itself.
I took a lot of time setting it all up, but my basic idea is, like the graphics, it seems like there might be a way to say what we want to say in three or four sentences and really streamline this. And sometimes I have found it's better to almost start over rather than trying to fix something that we have been putting Band-Aids on for a number of years. A lot of work went into this, and a lot of thought went into this, but seeing that graphic tonight made me think it's really a simple proposition that we're trying to address. Rather than having, we have open space used in a number of ways. We have usable open space, private open space, this open space, that open space, landscape elements, they're used different ways in different pieces of the statute. I would just like to, I would like to hear from council, not my prerogative to ask this, but if somehow we could say in three sentences or four sentences, what is it that we are asking staff to put, to codify about open space and floor area ratio, and the use of one or both of those elements? And then I have a question for the town attorney. Let's say we approve this or we approve something else, what application, if any, does it have to existing businesses?
So for businesses that have already been approved, it would come into effect, once it took effect 30 days after the second reading, for anyone who came in for a new application. So it would be prospective.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that would be if somebody came in and requested to modify a use permit or something, then it potentially could be looked at. But, I mean, going forward, and as one of your speakers earlier questioned the analysis, because prior councils over the last 20 years or so have approved a lot of projects, some of which don't meet the current parking requirements, or have been grandfathered at various points in times, and there's a number, but I do want to point out that this ordinance, the cleanup and the intent, and I think that's what we all agree, the intent is to be really clear on FAR mass, open space is whatever we determine, and use, because to the council's point, you can use open space, but if you're using open space, then it triggers the use conditions, parking, noise, et cetera. So I think we're getting closer, so then we can look at it. But the first step is, it would go forward, it would be how we use it for new applications and new things that come before you. We can't retroactively apply it to existing approved and operating permits.
And since Yountville is a predominantly built environment, it would be when somebody wants to use their outdoor area, and then it would be a use area that triggers a use permit review, and they'd have to meet parking. Because we have developed sites, there are probably very few that would be able to make that transition from open space to use area. Perhaps V Marketplace, Bellagio Vintage, offer the best opportunities. And again, that's why we put the option of the pilot program for wine tasting rooms before you, because none of those properties could meet their parking requirement, and yet we really view it as a minor impact to allow increased customer service, let's say.
Councilor Durham? Oh, wait, you still have additional coming?
I had a follow-up question. So to Ms. Reeves' comment, if, let's take an example, Gerard, because they're here tonight. If Gerard were, if we were to put in a new FAR in open space and use ordinance similar to this or this idea, and Gerard came forward and said, I now want my patio to become private open space, that would be the kind of amendment that would trigger a new parking analysis? Is that correct?
The use area.
It would trigger a use area, that would trigger parking, and yes, it would do so if the pilot program wasn't approved. We know that there is no room to add additional spaces in that lot, so they would probably, they would not have an opportunity to do that unless the town were interested in discussing off-site parking requirements with them, which there's very little to no opportunity for that.
I think, to simplify, just one of the themes that came out of the joint commission meeting was that when the council ultimately approved some of these projects with this open space, those chairs and tables have been there for a long time, the bench or whatnot. So the question that came from some of the dialogue was, hasn't it already been factored in somehow? Now mathematically, we didn't count it as the use, but I think the theme that came out of it is, is it truly changing the use impact? And again, you're talking about small areas where you've got three, four tables, a bench or two, and we're going to document what's existing. So it can be that they go add something, and it's really small. But that came out of the discussion that you all were having in the joint meeting about, what was our intent? And did we really intend, when we were crafting some of this and applying it 20 years ago, was this how it was intended to be enforced? And I think the council said, no, we need to take a look at, is this reflect 2016, which is 2017 now, I guess.
One more comment, then I'm going to make my comment.
Okay. I think what we're forgetting is kind of the human element for all this. You have your open space and your use area, and it triggers parking and all this stuff. But, you know, again, I think to another public comment that we heard, what we're talking about in reality here is going to, we're going to be allowing a lot more drinking outside, there will be a lot more wine consumption, people will be moving back and forth, you know, we've seen that before, and, you know, have we, those are different impacts that we're really not dealing with here about, you know, is this going to create a streetscape that we want, or is it going to be, you know, I like to use the excuse like Bourbon Street in New Orleans. So I think it is more than just trying to be very linear and angular about, you know, the definitions here. It changes our character, and I don't want to lose sight of that.
I couldn't disagree more with what you just said. I don't see this as becoming a Bourbon Street. I don't think that's a comparison that makes any sense at all. I think what we're talking about here is cleaning up some inconsistencies in definitions. I totally understand that, that makes sense. Also, having been a part of a lot of these open space and FAR conversations over many years and many projects, our intention was to protect the impact on the parcel and allow some softening, visual softening to the general public, basically. What I don't see these changes doing is triggering some dramatic change in operations on any of our business parcels. I just don't. We have encouraged and required parking behind buildings and open space in front to provide a streetscape that is visually appealing, and then we say we want to have tables and chairs out there to add energy and vibrancy and make it look like places are actually open and people are having fun. And we have done that. And then to say, we shouldn't allow you to use them for business purposes, they should just be visual, you know, visually engaging for the passerby, I just don't think, it doesn't speak to the intent of the regulations as I was making decisions, nor do I see this being any kind of grossly negative impact on our business. I think we're letting the businesses do what they do, which is serve their customers in an area that makes sense. I think, Nathan, I think your analysis of calling, you know, using use space as the definer versus FAR makes sense, because that's where the business is. But I think sometimes we're getting caught up in triggers of parking, and we have to be realistic about what is really triggering parking and what is really triggering other neighborhood impacts. And it's easy sometimes to, you know, kind of get off topic. I think we've gotten way off topic with this whole analysis of the ordinance, frankly. I think what you've done, it's cleaned up a lot of inconsistencies that have existed just by lack of analysis. I think the, you know, definition of use area versus FAR is a very reasonable and appropriate one. So, I mean, I basically accept the ordinance as you presented it for our consideration. The other conversations, and maybe having the pilot program dialogue on top of this is what's causing a little bit of, I think, a loss of focus. That's why I was hoping that we could talk specifically about the ordinance, and that's what I want us to do right now, and then we can have a separate conversation about the potential pilot program. So those are my thoughts. I mean, if anyone else has any addition... I mean, if anyone else has any additional thoughts or wants to entertain a motion to adopt and waive the reading of this ordinance, either would be welcome.
Well, I, I do have some more comments. And that is that I'm very conflicted, because the idea of the vibrancy of seeing people enjoying the out-of-doors and enjoying some wine, to me, is a, is a positive. I love the idea that when we walk along on our sidewalks, we're going to see people. I love walking past Bouchon Bakery and seeing all the people sitting there and enjoying it and talking. And certainly several of these room, tasting rooms that are represented this evening have spaces that could accommodate even just off the street if they were allowed to ser, you know, just serve the next poor. So I'm, I'm very conflicted, and maybe that is the pilot program, and maybe that's something that we should decide another time. But on the other hand, I do understand the idea of how resistant we are, and I am too, to the idea of, of the building creep, so that things get bigger and bigger and bigger in our little town. And that's why the thought of walling off public, uh, open space and making it private open space concerns me.
I'm going to try something that, to help the council, and I'm going to apologize, because I do see you all struggling, going back and forth between the general premise of the ordinance and the discussion of the possible pilot program. So what I want you to first go back is really focus on just the ordinance. Not any specific example, but what's going forward. Because that would be, is the new definition structure working for you? Is it helping on floor area ratio? Is it helping on use? Is it helping on the, um, open space? Just focus on that. Thinking about it as perspective for any new application that might come before you. And do not mix the pilot project and do not think about the existing built environment, because all of those would have to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, but only if you change the ordinance.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to introduce and waive the-
Have we closed the public hearing yet, Mayor?
I didn't realize this was actually a public hearing.
It's in 10A, right? We're on 10A?
Okay.
Okay.
Then all of this has been part of the public hearing.
Sorry.
And I'll close the public hearing.
And I'll make a motion to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number 17-458, amending the Yountville Municipal Code section regarding open space and floor area ratio requirements and definitions.
And we're going to add a gavel sound in at the very beginning of this conversation when I open the public hearing. That's what I get for moving it on to the next page of the agenda. Is there a second for that? I'll second the motion.
So can I ask a question?
Discussion about the motion?
So this current ordinance says that, uh, open space can go private under what conditions?
Well, the, having it become private would then be use-related. And so if it's-
Is it case-by-case?
That would be based on the use permit.
This ordinance says it's case-by-case. So we're not setting any precedent at this time regarding open space or making any decision whether it's public versus private.
Correct. Can I?
Question, Vice Mayor.
Yes, please. I would like to, uh, uh, ask for an amendment that apps, that puts in the three-foot height limit on fences around, um, public or private open space that is in line of sight from, however you want to phrase that. I mean, you say that it exists, but I don't see it in here, and I would like to see it in this ordinance.
Well, it's only for the front setback, if you mean anything that's visible that would go deeper on the property. Potentially could go deeper on the property.
Well, at least on the front setback. So I would like that spelled out, that in the front-
Those are spelled out in the design ordinance. The two ordinances work together, the zoning ordinance and the design ordinance.
I see.
So that analysis, sorry, to try to move that thought forward, that analysis would still take place. If an applicant wanted to then propose a screening that didn't currently exist, that would be thoroughly vetted through our normal processes. They would not be automatically allowed to do something. Now, if you put, you can build a three-foot fence into this ordinance, then it would be allowed by rule. That would actually work against, I think, what you're saying, which is you would want it to be, um, analyzed on a case-by-case basis. And there already is language that says you can't be higher than a three-foot.
Okay.
In the front. Does that, does that make sense?
All right, as long as that is spelled out in, in the, um, the design review that works with this.
Gary, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Everybody's nodding yes that needs to nod yes?
Okay.
So there is a motion and a second. Is there any further, yes?
Sorry, before you call for a vote, um, Councilmember Dornbecker raised the deletion of the language in a number of the proposed, uh, sections that talks about there shall be no obstructions except for devices, and the public has to see it, the, has to have visual access. I was on the ZDRB, and I do recall the discussion of, um, being able to secure the property. But, and, you know, I know y'all will probably play the tape next time, but I don't recall a vigorous discussion of during the day to be able to block the visual, because the whole purpose was, we want the street front to be vibrant and open and welcoming to our residents and visitors. So I would point that out, um, if that could possibly be an amendment. And just from my edification, from a process standpoint, is a vote in favor of this, a vote to bring it forward at a subsequent meeting, so that there's still opportunity for amendment to it?
This is, well, go ahead, Gary.
Yes, that's correct. Um, this would come back for a second reading, uh, at the next meeting. If it were amended again at that meeting, it would have to come back for a second, second reading at the next meeting.
So the answer is yes, that there would be the potential.
Correct.
Typically, that's not the step we would take, but it's absolutely a possible step.
Thank you, thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor in a second to accept this ordinance as presented. There's been a request to amend that, uh, motion. I'll defer to the motioner on whether you're willing to accept any modification to the motion or not.
Can I ask Councilmember Doran, Dornin, a question then? Do you foresee further amendments?
Well, and this is totally on me, because I did not send my voluminous comments to staff until 1:00 or 1:30 today. And I don't have, I don't have any issue with what I think we're trying to do, to separate mass and use. And so I don't see any fundamental, um, from my point of view, a fundamental change in what we're trying to do. Now, some of the languages, I said at the beginning, I think we have overlapping and conflicting definitions, and I do see some opportunity for further streamlining. But fundamentally, I like where we're going.
The reason for my question is, then I'd prefer just to move forward, and we can discuss that then at the second reading.
Well, it's your prerogative to not accept any changes. I'm, I'm open to the staying the second of the motion as presented.
So I'll stay with the motion as presented.
Okay, so with all that discussion, we'll go ahead and, we lost the voting window?
Yes.
Well, mine disappeared, but I thought it was just me.
No, okay, so please go ahead and cast your vote. That is unanimously passed, five-zero, that we accept the ordinance, the first reading, the introduction and waive the first reading of this ordinance. So thank you for that robust discussion. Let's give guidance now on the proposed pilot program. We've heard public testimony. I'll invite feedback from the council on the proposed pilot project. It would still need to be, uh, put in some level of detail before any execution were to happen.
Simply feedback that we're seeking.
Let's start to my far left.
Um, I have seen nothing that changes my opinion from when I considered it on the ZDRB. So I would not be interested in further pursuit.
Thank you. Councilor Durham?
I'm going to go out on a ledge here and say, I go out more than the council. I go out more than the staff, and I go out more than everybody in this audience here in town. And frequent the, uh-
So is that a challenge?
Yeah, it could be. To frequent the fine establishments in this community. I'm open to this program only on one basis, and that is simply, I believe that, I don't believe everybody should be punished for someone's wrongdoing, and I don't think those who were punished should be allowed to have an opportunity based on other people's good behavior, um, walking around this community, um, seeing those who have openly used their open space with staff outside pouring, serving to those who have not. If this can be on a case-by-case basis, I'm, I'm for it. If it doesn't come down to a case-by-case basis, I, I, I'm just, when, when these businesses came before us, those use permits were very clear. And as a business owner, it's your responsibility to maintain your business, which is train your staff. No matter how much that staff turns over, no matter how much training's involved, it's your responsibility as the business owner who came here and accepted those terms to operate that business that way. And unfortunately, some of the businesses in this community have not done that for quite some time. So if it can be on a case-by-case basis, then I, I see a place for it.
Uh, let me ask, Gary, I want to ask a follow-up to that point. Is there any legal restriction to case-by-case implementation of something like that? Or would that be considered inappropriate?
Yeah, as long as the pilot program was drafted with criteria that would be applied, and an applicant would come in on a, to apply, and those criteria would be, um, on a has-applied basis, if, if that makes sense.
But I think the, the point that you're making is if the existing business had, has violated what we are talking about potentially offering, could that be a disqualifier from the program? Is that what I mean?
Or at least, or at least, uh, yeah, or at least you have to wait another 12 months and then come back, and then you'll be on a probationary period. Something that we could determine, but-
Is it that discretionary is what I'm asking? Or is that punitive?
Yeah, there could be a provision that includes past violations of the municipal code would be a, a factor that would be disfavored or as exclusionary, that would be possible.
So is that, that answers your concern there?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Muller?
So a little more clarity on that. I mean, can you give me an example of what kind of criteria? I mean, really to Councilmember Durham's point, I mean, if somebody's been very flagrant in the past, we're not going to probably look that favorably on there, but how do we do that from a legal perspective?
Right. I think there's different ways to frame it for the different criteria. Simply having a past violation of the municipal code or municipal code provision that relates specifically to the pilot program or a use thereunder would be an example of how to do it. But, um, I'd probably want to confer with staff on the scope of the pilot program and really spell out what the criteria would be.
And we don't have to drill down on every detail right now. You're hearing some feedback about what we would like you to potentially analyze if there is a program put forward in the future.
So if, one more question. If the pilot program does go on the table, um, does that open up the whole use permit that we can change anything we want to grant them, um, access to the pilot program? It would change their use permit, the way I look at it. And everything's up in the air at that point.
Within reason. Um, it would be an amendment to their use permit, which then the council can place conditions on.
We can change their hours, we can change parking, we can change other criteria as well.
I, I think the framework, this is where we're asking for your feedback, because the, the earlier feedback was perhaps we can clean up something in a reasonable way. If you're opening it all up to everything, I don't know that some of the businesses are going to want to come have a conversation, because that may not be something. So I think we need to know what criteria you would expect to be reviewed. You know, we've talked about employee parking management plan. We can certainly put criteria in to review their results of their annual conditional use permit monitoring, if there's any documented violations. I mean, we need to hear from you on what that expectation would be, because we were trying to do something that's generally not wide open, but a very narrow, um, to that. And if the council's interest is different, I think we need to know that in order to craft whatever the pilot program, because the intent, and as you saw in the analysis, it, the cursory observation is five or six properties. I mean, we're envisioning something where we're going to have sketches, documentation, affidavits, things like that. So it's a complete package. But I don't think we were talking about, come in and we'll blow up your whole existing use permit, at least at a staff level. That wasn't, that wasn't what we thought we heard the council say.
All right, Gary, you had a follow-up to that?
Yeah, I was just, um, to follow up on the criteria question. Criteria for how many businesses this would apply to, or the scope of it. You could base it on number of employees, use, type of, um, number of customers, these types of things. So you, you could limit it to, um, only a few by using general terms, if that makes sense.
I mean, who would qualify to be a part of the program, you're saying?
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm leaning towards perhaps looking at that, what that would look like. I think that my big concern is a real over-intensification of use. We, I certainly witnessed, you know, a patio where, you know, it was so crammed with people and baby strollers, which always just made me crazy, that both the parents were out there drinking and had all the baby strollers there, you know, and it was just packed with people. Nobody else could get in there, and it was open space. So if we didn't have this giant over-intensification of use, and it really is just creating a vibrant streetscape with not like, you know, hordes of people kind of cramming in there and everybody, you know, bringing lots of wine out, you know, I have no problem with that. But, you know, to be able to control that, that, you know, we love our staff. We know you go, go out and look at all this stuff, but you're not there on Friday night or Saturday afternoon where a lot of the real over-intensification of use is going on. So I'd be willing to look at something that, um, really allowed our businesses to have somebody having a glass of wine, you know, out there, but without this over-intensification of use, and something that you could really show that you could monitor when you're not here at work, which is, you know, if you can get there, I'm open to taking a look at it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, um, I've liked elements of what each of my colleagues have said. I like the idea of, um, this being on a case-by-case basis, judged by specific metrics of how you can judge the success and the impacts. Because I too love the idea of a vibrant, you know, open, uh, uh, scape on the, on the, uh, on the main street, main business street in our town. But I do feel that there has to be a way to judge and judge accurately the impacts on parking and noise and et cetera. So when you, when you, you know, are refining this, please, um, take that into consideration. I would, I would, you know, look at another proposal to do it with those caveats.
Thank you. And I'm going to start by saying I take some of the blame for, um, having these dual conversations that I think have basically blurred and muddied both. As a standalone, we got through the ordinance thing. As a standalone, this pilot program makes total sense to me. If we had not had the mixing of worrying about what is the use space and the FAR, we probably would have, uh, had a much shorter conversation about the pilot program, I think. You have given us very specific criteria that would qualify for this. I think that's totally appropriate. I think, um, we have probably been, uh, over-careful about, um, what we're allowing in these, uh, open spaces and open, uh, parts of our businesses. Sometimes you just have to look at what is happening and is it really what we want to be happening? To have guests come to Yountville and not be allowed to be poured- To have guests come to Yountville and not be allowed to be poured a second tasting where, you know, they're sitting in a...they don't care, they don't know what open space versus inside tasting room is. They're sitting on a nice chair or a bench in front of a fire and expect service to come out and give them another tasting pour. We're not talking about creating a bar scene here where we have people outside drinking, you know, full glasses of wine and sharing bottles of wine and spirits. I mean, this is a very refined, controlled environment we're talking about. You have limited to very specific businesses with very specific criteria. I think it totally makes sense, especially as a pilot program. Let's find out if there are any things that might come up as unintended consequences rather than assuming the worst-case scenarios. I don't see that happening. I don't see...that's not what our business community is looking to do here. I mean, they have a level of service and integrity and professionalism that they take very dearly, because it's part of their brand. Doesn't make sense for them to, you know, overstep from that. So I think it makes total sense to look at this. You've heard some of the feedback, might make the program a little bit better, but I'd definitely like to see you come back with something with some details to it that we can apply to some of our...you know, we have a half a dozen businesses that we're talking about here. It's not open season on all tasting rooms that don't fit this tight criteria. So that's my feedback. And I believe that's all the action you needed from us on that item?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was hoping to hear. Okay, that was our public hearing. Believe it or not, 11B, we are now moving on to...Maria finally gets to participate tonight with our year-end financial report. Let's hear some really good news, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got the year-end financial report, which is...it's a little later than usual, and we'll endeavor to bring it to you sooner next year. One of the things that I can tell you is that the tables in the report are actually provided to you when the June report was given, because really that signifies the end of the fiscal year. So the reason that we follow with a year-end report like this is after we get our CAFR, so that we can make sure that there aren't any major adjustments and that we rebalance everything. And then we're able to really say to you, we've passed our audit, there weren't any major material items, and then we can make a recommendation to you on what is called the unassigned fund balance. So that would be for the general fund. The general fund performed very well. Property tax and TOT treated us very nicely. So that's always really good news for this town, as those are...TOT in particular is a very large portion of our revenue stream. CIP funds were well allocated so that we can make projects possible, and we did do some advances for some projects in anticipation of receiving reimbursements for Measure A from the county, and so we're still balancing those pieces out. The enterprise funds, while it was almost five years that you had a rate study and one is underway, the enterprise funds continue to operate a bit in deficit, and so we're working to address that with our current consultant, who's the same consultant who worked with us last time, to try and understand how we're going to work through those funds. But on...those are your enterprise funds. The large portion of the deficit is in...on the capital side in your enterprise funds, but we'll be talking with you in more detail about that when we actually complete our rate study, and we'll talk about impacts, including the drought and projects and depreciation and things like that, that are more appropriate to table to another meeting related to rates and how we're doing. But it's important to just let you know that some of the funds, the capital funds in the enterprise funds, did end in deficit. So we'll be working to address that. But with the general fund, we did end with...let's get right down to the penny here. We ended with $586,942,051. And so at the end of every year, when you have a surplus, you have the option to do an allocation of these funds. And so there are two points that I'd like to address related to these funds and the opportunity that you have to reallocate them. And the first is to allocate $220,000 to this fiscal year for the PERS unfunded accrued liability for '16-'17, and I'll explain what that is in just a second. And then the second is to take the remaining balance, which is $366,942,051, to develop a reserve fund for the PERS unfunded accrued liability. So the PERS used to bill towns in one invoice, one lump sum payment, and cities traditionally calculated as a way, a percentage of payroll and budgeted it and paid the payments every month. When the performance on PERS changed and we had economic impacts, PERS had to determine a way to recover their losses and still continue to perform and stabilize things. And so they created the normal cost, which is NC, and the unfunded accrued liability, which is UAL. So you'll begin to hear that more as we get into budget. So what happens now is PERS sends you a bill for the percentage of your payroll, which is based on a certain percentage. That percentage for us is about 12 percent. And then they send you a total bill for the unfunded accrued liability. So we've got this unbudgeted unfunded accrued liability invoice to pay for this fiscal year that we need allocated funds for. That's why I'm proposing the 220 be allocated. And then we know that this unfunded accrued liability bill will continue to come in the future, and we want to set aside this modest amount of money and continue to work to save toward that, similar to how you've done with OPEB, where we would set up a reserve. We're going to meet with PERS, the same group who's helping us invest the OPEB funds, and where it's performing quite well. And the reason that we want to do that is so that we can save the funds, have some investment, get some returns, secure them, and then pay them to PERS when they ask for them, as opposed to maybe getting ahead of us and saying, oh, PERS, you sent us our bill and you said that it's going to be this, but then if the economy changes, the money is now there and you really don't get it back. So I don't know if I'm saying too much and confusing you, but I'm trying to keep it simple. So the purpose of this resolution before you tonight is to recommend that you allocate the remaining unassigned fund balance for '15-'16 to these two areas for the reasons that I've explained, and then receive feedback or comments if you'd like to do something different, because ultimately it's up to you. And I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Questions? Councilmember Mueller?
So recently, PERS in the state of California changed what they anticipated to earn on the...well, our funded CalPERS. And so by changing that interest rate downward from eight and three-quarters to seven and a half, in essence, what that does is says you're not going to earn enough as much money as we let you calculate, so now you owe us more.
You've got to make up the gap.
So is this 220 related to that, or is that something that's still coming?
Yes. No, that's exactly it. It will continue to come. The statements...the statements are updated every year, once a year, and we're...
So it's basically due to the change in the interest rate, which I still think is outrageous and absurd, that we think we're going to earn, because nobody else earns that.
And they've split it, right?
Right.
And so they have got the normal cost for what is for the upcoming year, plus what is the past of making up that gap.
So every year, we're going to owe, and if they keep changing it downwards, more and more, or if they change it upwards, perhaps less.
We would need to reevaluate that.
So twice a year, for...let's just say everything stays the same, this 220 is going to have to be paid twice a year?
No.
Just once a year?
And it's not...well, it's 220 right now for this year, and it will be something else for next year, which will be folded into your budget, what we didn't...
Well, no, I understand all that.
Correct.
But basically, it goes with the change in that interest rate, which took them a long time ago.
Correct. You'll have an unfunded liability item, which we will report to you on.
That's my only question, thanks.
Right. And just to amplify, what we're really talking about is we're taking the opportunity to get in front of the PERS mess.
Yeah, this is not discretionary. We owe the money.
We owe the first 220.
Right. We have the money.
And we...
You're telling us we need to pay off the bill.
And then the...
For item one, yes.
And then the balance is we want to start being proactive so that we will have a funding structure, much like we did when we started the OPEB conversation, to build up. The other thing that you will see in the upcoming budget parameters is that Maria and I will be doing a factor, because we use the payroll percentage. So you're also going to see us raise the internal payroll rate reflective of the prior year, so we can reduce the gap, which is going to have an impact on the budget. Does that make sense?
Oh, there you go.
We're going to be raising our internal rate that we have...
Yeah, I'm going to...sorry. Any questions on A? Do we all understand that? Is there a question about what Maria's requesting, Vice Mayor?
Well...
I mean, number one.
It's not on what you're requesting, but it is on the balance for...to get ahead of the upcoming costs. As I read through this, I looked at all of the expenses that came in over budget, and community promotions was over by $40,000, and park and rec sports were over by 10,000, and the Fennel Culvert was over by 381,000, and the flood wall repair was over by 62,000, and the water operating fund was over by 11,000 to 12,000. So my point is, if we're...if this is the...all of the unfun...of the general fund that is over and above what we were expecting to get and what...that all the rest of it has been allocated?
Correct.
So we don't have anything in...left in the general fund to pay costs that have big overruns like this?
No, 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 no.
So you have your...so you have your adopted budget.
Right.
And so then, when we start to have overruns in the budget, we always come to you for adjustments. And so in this...so what we're talking about here is...
And you're asking for an adjustment?
Well, technically, yes, for this fiscal year. However, you've got excess funds from June 30th of last fiscal year that are available to cover this.
Okay.
Which is...but I am required to come to you and say, council, this is your leftover funds from last year. How would you like to use them?
Okay.
Here are some suggestions. And so this is...
All right. Now I understand.
But I think the question, if I understood your question correctly, is that you were worried that all those other overruns were still unpaid?
No, we net...so we net everything out.
Was that the question?
Well, it's just, in looking at that, are we anticipating over...going over budget on other things in the coming year, and will we, you know...
We...I think the...
Are we going to have money put aside to pay for things that we go over budget on?
First thing I want to stress, the reason you're...you have unassigned fund balance, that's a positive thing.
I know that.
What I want to stress, though, is the general trend line, with the exceptions, generally we stay...we're actually...part of the other reason that we have the unassigned fund balance is that we came in actually below expenditures in total. Individual items may have gone over, and those were compensated by other programs or functions that came under budget. So when you look at the current year, we're tracking very well, and we're also tracking ahead on revenue. But I want to say, you know, in a perfect world, a lot of organizations don't have the unfunded or unassigned fund balance discussion that we have. And the council has also tried to give me some direction to narrow the amount that we have, so we'll be looking at allocation. But I do take to heart your concern about project management and expenditure control. We do a very good job in general with the discipline. A couple of the projects that you identified, for example, the flood wall and a few other things, you came back and told us, you know, adjust it, the Veterans Memorial Project. So there's a handful of things that, while they're over the initial budget, they're within the council authorization. The same thing with Hopper Creek, if you recall. It's over the original budget, and then we have some offsetting revenue that's coming in. So just something to footnote, and that's why we do this as a...this is a year-end summary of six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll do a year-end coming up for the current year that we're in, if that...
Thank you.
If that helps you with the explanation.
And so the 220 is, again, I'll just stress, it's really not up for discussion. We need to pay it.
Correct.
So the 366 and change is up for discussion.
Correct.
You're making a recommendation that it goes toward the PERS unfunded liability. We could determine that we want to either give less of that or take it as is or...
That's correct.
Have another payment somewhere.
That's correct.
Okay. So thoughts about...so...
Well, I have one more question.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to find out, speaking of OPEB, how much did we pay towards OPEB?
Oh, gosh, I can't remember off the top of my head.
More than we need...more than required.
We're really funding the art.
I think the art is like 120, 130.
And we're paying the full percentage, so every year we budget that.
We're exceeding that.
I think it's 192.
Although when the...when we had the auditor here, he mentioned that we actually have a...over a million dollars in...that we...that is outstanding.
He was talking about the unfunded liability piece, so there's a new way that you have to measure your liability, kind of a little bit like unfunded liability in PERS. There's a new way that you have to measure what you have going forward, but we're funding it at the best rate possible to be prepared to have those funds available when they come due. And we will come back to you with an information on that as well. So your time will be...
We decided a couple of years ago to be more proactively funding than keeping pace with what we were accruing.
That's correct.
And so we're staying ahead of that funding still. This money...these monies are not coming out of...instead of doing that, we're doing this.
Correct.
But to the council's point, in the past, the unassigned fund balance, you've chose to potentially...I mean, one, that is how we started working towards our OPEB irrevocable trust by putting unassigned fund balance, building it. In some years, you've used it to increase your reserve targets for the emergency reserve revenue stabilization fund.
I remember.
They're all both healthy, and they're exceeding your current targets. We see the greatest uncertainty right now that loses sleep for Maria and I is the fact that there's so much uncertainty with what PERS is doing and how little influence we have. Our thought is that it's the most conservative place for us to have a dedicated reserve to address it. While we still have healthy reserves in the other areas, we're meeting your target projections in all other areas, and then next year, when you're going to go into budget, then we'll look at initial allocations, and we may include a recommendation to put a few dollars, or we may do like we did previous, is use the year-end unassigned fund balance to help us. But I do want to make sure you do have those other options if you want to look at them.
In your 2...in your 366, 900, is your very safe guesstimate of what we're going to need to cover next year when this happens again?
And a tiny bit more.
With more.
Just a tiny bit more. I...right now, as I have it, I think it's just...I think it's $297,000, but because this is what's left, I just figured it makes sense to put it aside and then start that savings fund and hopefully have some performance and have it safe and secure and use it to pay.
Because there could be years in the future that we don't have $586,000 to...
That's correct.
Put toward this.
You keep telling us that we're going to flatten out, so I'm just watching.
Steve's going to be telling us that in a couple of months, I think, when we have our budget meetings again.
Well, although your TOT is looking so good, I mean...
Thank you. With that statement, I'm going to ask if we have...
For the record, I was the one that put a higher TOT in the proposed budget.
Unfortunately, there's nobody left in the audience to hear that. Thank you, Devin.
So what is the...
Aw, Devin.
What does the council want to do about the 366 and change that Maria is recommending? Is there a motion to accept both of these recommendations, or is there an interest in modifying number two? Do you think we could agree that number one is a bill we need to pay, and it's not really up for discussion?
Well, I have a question about number two.
Are you...okay.
Are we expecting to get...are...we don't have any dedicated way of increasing our CIP, except from this mechanism from the...every six months. Are we going to do that at the year-end? Is that the plan?
No, I want...that's a great question, Councilmember Mueller, as you recall.
Steve, I don't think you're...
Sorry. That's a great...
That's a great question. If you recall, last year, we started allocating money into the capital projects fund at the beginning of the budget as well, so we can do a transfer in. In the past, you have also moved money in the unassigned fund balance. So we're also...
Which this is.
Correct. So I'm just saying, but in this particular case, you're still doing it both as the initial budget, and you'll have a recommendation. The other thing staff is preparing, we're going to need...we are...we're going to have a little less need on the capital projects fund, because we have Measure T coming, and Measure T is going to need to be restricted, but it's going to put a little...a little bit, for those that's...I should clarify, Measure T is the transportation in 2018-19.
Streets of Rose Village.
So we're going to be able to use that and lessen the need, because we've been funding some of our projects. So I...we're comfortable right now that it's...but you're correct in observing, you know, it will be a lesser capital projects fund balance, but we also have fewer projects that we're bringing forward in this interim time period for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I make a motion that we...sorry.
I make a motion that we, sorry, establishing allocation for Resolution Number seventeen dash three-three-nine-zero, establishing allocation of five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents to the general fund unassigned fund balance for fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? And just to honor our, our public that's here. You didn't want to say anything, did you? Okay, good. We have our voting screens up, so please cast your vote. Five-zero, this motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Maria, for being also insightful about what we need to worry about, that we don't need to, that we didn't realize we need to worry about. Because it's true, we're very fortunate to have this five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars to be able to put toward this, and in the future, we may not. But we also know that there's going to be volatility in this area in the future, so it's a very good idea to get, get prepared for that. Okay, let's move forward to our commission appointments. Nope, we have budget adjustment. We still have a budget adjustment. More, Maria?
I know, you never hear from me, and then today, all of a sudden. So, so this item before you, Council, is related to, I'm going to call this your just-in-case resolution. So the reason this is before you is because, as you know, we purchase our water directly from the veterans' home. And the true-up of water and wastewater, as our contract is outlined, occurs usually sometime after the fiscal year has ended, right when we're closing our books and getting ready for the audit. So it's a pretty busy time. So you might recall that in December, we had a water main break. And when we did, that caused the town to go on to the Napa Water System. In addition to that, we've had more than anticipated events where we've had to switch off the waters, get on Napa Water, and flush our mains more often than usual for the safety of the town. And so that has generated an increased cost to the expenses that we normally pay for Napa Water. Now, we've got a budget of six-hundred-and-four thousand and change to pay for water expenses overall. A really large portion of that usually is paid to the veterans' home. This year, we received an invoice of about forty thousand dollars for that large period of time when we were on the Napa Water System in December for the break. And then we've experienced the extra flushing, so we've spent an additional twenty already this year. So what we're suggesting here is your approval of this resolution. If, when the true-up is done in July or August, if we do not have enough money in the six-oh-four-oh-seven-oh budgeted, that we would then take a loan from the Drought Reserve Fund, which is Fund Fifty-Seven, which is very healthy, a low-interest loan, and loan it to the fund which pays for our water expense and consumption, so that we could cover the cost. And so I wouldn't do this transfer unless we actually did not have enough budgeted in here. But we're doing it now in anticipation of the timing of when things occur, knowing that this is here now and that it's happened, and just seeking your authorization to do it, should we need to.
Because you're not as busy now as you will be in a few months.
Correct.
Questions?
If the loan has to occur, who sets the interest rate?
We do. I mean, the council can determine. And we're also just in that clarity. We're recommending, this is a loan from the water fund to the water fund and in an area-
Left pocket to right pocket?
They're usually about one percent or two percent. They've been fairly small. I would go look at the last loans that we had and follow the same process. Yeah.
Safe to say, this is a very common transfer that we have done to basically loan to ourselves. We're not going out to outside agency for a loan.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the recommendation as presented? Don't all jump at once.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number one-seven-three-three-eight-nine, approving a budget adjustment of a low-interest loan from the Drought Reserve Fund, Number Fifty-Seven, up to a maximum of fifty-eight thousand dollars to the Water Utility Operating Fund, Number six-one-four-five-oh-seven, if needed.
All seconded. Oh, you did? Oh, you're using the, wow, you're gone.
I'm using, I'm using technology.
Wow.
Well, I know you used the promotion, and it didn't, I saw you do it.
Okay, we're, we're, we're getting fancy. All right, please vote. Five-zero, that motion passes. Thank you very much. And I realize, Michelle, last time you were so quick moving on to the next item in the, in the blue bar here, I, I misread it.
Oh, sorry.
No, I've got to just keep up with you. Next up, Yountville Arts Commission appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the town staff recruited for one vacancy on the Yountville Arts Commission due to a resignation from the commission. The town staff did the normal recruitments, and at the end of the recruitment, we received two applications. And subsequent to that, one of the individuals withdrew because they were, didn't feel that they could fulfill the time equipment, commitment to the commission. So we have one applicant, which is Liz Hour. And the council interviewed this applicant earlier, and staff is asking that you appoint her with the term to expire July twenty-first, twenty eighteen. Based on your voting tallies, everyone did recommend her, so it was unanimous to recommend that one applicant.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to appoint Liz Hour to the Yountville Arts Commission?
Still moved. Second.
Are we trying to use the buttons?
When you guys don't, I'm doing.
Go ahead, Carrie, if you want to hit the button also.
Punch to you.
There we go. All, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you to Liz for being willing to step up and join our Arts, Arts Commission. Next up, we did have four applicants for two positions on our Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. And what happened?
And what happened? At the conclude, we had Mark Haugen, Sandra Fagan, incumbent members apply, and then also two new applicants from Kara Scoggins and Yvette Shearer. Based on the vote tally calculated, Sandra Fagan was the first choice, Kara Scoggins was the second choice, Yvette Shearer was the third choice, and Mark Haugen was the fourth choice. The council, we're asking council to appoint two members with the term of office to expire July twenty-first, and that would be the first and second person, which would be Sandra Fagan and Kara Scoggins.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect? Somebody push a button? Somebody want to push another button? Okay, we have a motion, and a second motion by Councilmember Durham, seconded by Vice Mayor Dornbecker. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously, five-zero, so we welcome Sandy Fagan and Kara Scoggins. And we appreciate the willingness to serve by our other two applicants. Thank you to all four of them. And town staff will let everyone know the outcomes.
So will you please encourage them to stay involved and, you know, watch out for other vacancies?
Sure.
Thank you. Staff informational reports. I believe we're going to start with a thirty-slide review of Public Works Director Tagle Abashi's trip to Hawaii.
Oh, okay.
Really not ready for that, but I'd like to, I, I would like to say that as of about twenty minutes ago, we are below monitor stage on the Napa River. So for those of you who were wondering where we're at, river's back inside its banks. And the National Weather Service briefing I had earlier today, the worst is behind us. It's going to rain a little bit, but nothing like we just came through. So I think the flood control project that we did earlier this year, as noted a couple of times this evening, performed very well, and, and so happy that we got it done in time for this set of storms that have been coming through since about October.
Well, the areas that typically flood and basically are engineered to flood did flood. And so are all neighborhoods and streets clear in the town limits?
As of, as of the time going into this meeting, they were all open and, and, and able for, had access. Vineyard Park did have some water, but that was receding, and, and I'm sure that that is actually clear now as well.
Great, thank you. You didn't have your, your vacation slides available?
No, aloha.
All right.
Mahalo.
I'm sure we'll see it on the street sign blinking for us anyways, that's fine.
Any other staff informational reports? I guess we're not getting one from the town attorney or town manager because he's now gone. All right, let's go to council meeting reports, comments. I will give as quickly as I can some of the meetings. The Napa County City Selection Committee did appoint the St. Helena City Council recommendation of Paul Doring to fill the remaining five months on the LAFCO seat that had been vacated by Greg Pitts following his election defeat. Calistoga will next rotate into that seat in May of this year, so there's, it's only a, an abbreviated length of time that Councilmember Doring will be in that seat. Napa Flood Control, speaking of floodwaters, we did just have a meeting today. The principal takeaway, two of them won, the flood bypass project was again in very serious effect and did a very excellent job of handling significant floodwaters through that bypass. So all things were very positive there. We also received a report from the Flood District staff about several locations along the Napa River that have bank erosion, and they are working with the property owners on fixes, partly so that the failing trees and other parts of the banks don't clog up the river up Valley and also with engineering repairs. Those are the two main takeaways from that. Napa Valley Transportation Authority, Councilmember Moller, do you have a report on that?
I think the only thing that, briefly, that I wanted to talk about that's relevant to Yountville is the ways that the individual trolleys run in the city, especially with, with their call centers, especially with Calistoga, and there's a lot of problems in Napa as well, they're not working very well. So NVTA is going to undertake a, a new system, and it might look something like an Uber app where you could call your trolley. They've got to work out a lot of bugs and find out, you know, like our veterans who don't probably have a lot of cell phones, how they're going to call the trolley. They might put a button at the, at the bus stop. They have some things to work out, but June would be a rollout at the very earliest, so.
Thank you. Watershed Information and Conservation Council, do we have a report?
No, that's coming up in two weeks.
Okay. League of California Cities North Bay Division Meeting, I think there are a few of us that could speak to that. I'll just start and see if there's anything to follow up. There was a presentation on the Smart Train in Marin that is intended to ease traffic congestion along the Highway one-on-one corridor. We had a, the dinner meeting was held in Petaluma where the topics were various transit solutions that are either in place or being considered for the North Bay. I also attended, and maybe the Vice Mayor can also speak to this, as a committee chair up in Sacramento. I attended, we, we both attended the Legislative Reception in Sacramento for the New Mayors and Council Members Conference. And you spent a few days up there, I believe.
Well, just two, but I did chair our Community Services Policy Committee in which we chose, I think I've reported out on this before, but anyway. We chose the three strategic goals for our committee for the year, which sort of mirrored what the, the league itself had chosen, including homelessness and affordability of housing, transportation and infrastructure. And the third one escapes me at the moment, but it was a very good meeting. There were about forty-five members of that committee. It was larger than it had been in the past. And I think it's going to be, a lot of people are going to be talking about infrastructure and water and transportation, and also about homelessness and housing affordability. There are a couple of bills that are coming up. And we did have a presentation by one of the, I didn't bring my notes from that night, but it was a gentleman who is a state assembly member from Modesto, I think, named Garcia. And he was talking about Parks and Open Space Bill that he has submitted at the state level, and it sounded very good and would, you know, be very beneficial for all of us in which a certain amount of money would go to every town and municipality based on population. So we'd probably get about three and a half dollars, but hopefully we will see something out of that in the future. But it was a very good presentation, and I do support that bill. Thank you.
I was also-
Right, I was about to ask you for your-
Up in Sacramento and attended the Environmental Quality Meeting. Once again, we talked about marijuana legislation, and we reviewed all of our policies, and we decided that we needed to form some additional subcommittees to revise some of the major policies we had. So we formed one for looking at SEQA, always a very hot topic. Water conveyance, especially in the Delta as well as the eastern part of the state. And we also formed a subcommittee that I was asked to join on looking at parameters and for CCA, Community Choice Aggregates. Because as everyone knows, the public utilities certainly have a lot of rules and regulations, and these CCAs are just all over the place. So we're going to at least try to give our input on what these Community Choice Aggregate Programs, if we can set some boundaries or frameworks around them. So that's what we talked about.
Very good. I have a few other reports and announcements. Were there any other committee meetings ever?
I'd just like to thank our town manager for taking me under his wing at the New Council Members and Mayors Conference in Sacramento. I learned an awfully lot. Thank you.
He knows a lot of people at that thing, too.
He does know a lot of people.
So just the last few items, the town, I think, is finalizing details on hosting the Wall That Heals, which is a replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall that is traveling across the country. We are expecting that to be here in March, and we're working with our Yountville Veterans Home Administration to coordinate volunteers and the execution of that display that we believe is going to be up at the Yountville Community Park. It's a much larger display than originally anticipated, so, but we're, we're very honored and privileged to be able to be a part of that presentation. I also met with the Secretary of Calvet, Dr. Vito Ambossiani, along with town manager and a couple of members of his staff and the local home administration discussing their plans for renovation and service delivery updates at the veterans' home. A top priority that they have said on numerous occasions is a new skilled nursing facility to replace the very long-serving but now outdated Holderman Hospital, and also the efforts by Calvet to invest significant resources into modernizing facilities and service delivery in general. Workforce housing is another priority that we have been discussing that could help some of the nine-hundred-plus employees of the veterans' home. And Dr. Ambossiani is headed to Washington, DC at the end of this month to meet with the new federal VA leadership. I believe four of the five of us council members and our town manager and staff were at the LAFCO Local Agency Formation Committee meeting that was held in these chambers on Monday as they, if that commission considered the draft Municipal Services Review and Sphere of Influence Adjustment Request that the town has made. The public comment period continues for one more month with a final draft expected to be considered and hopefully approved by the commission in April. Also, Councilmember Moller and town manager and myself are continuing dialogue with representatives of the Board of Supervisors and the CEO of the board regarding this same issue. I also attended the Napa Chamber of Commerce Awards Luncheon, representing the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and presented the Member of the Year Award to representatives from Justin Sienna High School. So congratulations to them and all the other recipients of the awards from the Napa Chamber of Commerce. of Commerce. That's all I've got. Is there anything else, any other business for us out of our closed session? Do we anticipate any reportable action out of closed session, Carrie? Very good. So we will adjourn to closed session and come out of that, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting of Tuesday, February twenty-first, at six PM. So with that, we will go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.